Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. It's a little past seven o'clock. The first on our agenda tonight is continued discussion with CMRPC regarding zoning bylaws for solar energy systems and hazardous waste facilities. I'd like to welcome Sarah Adams from CMRPC, who helped us to put this together and serves our expert here, and will walk us through, starting with solar, if that works for you.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, for those of you who I haven't met before, I'm Sarah Adams. I'm a principal planner with CMRPC. That's the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We serve, we're based in thirty-nine surrounding towns, providing everything from zoning bylaw, revision assistance, to grant procurement assistance, and really, everything in between. So, today, we are looking at your solar bylaw, which was drafted in...
Two thousand and fourteen.
Two thousand and fourteen, okay. So, you all have a packet in front of you. I stapled them in the wrong order, so if you want to flip through the solar section, this is just the draft that Kathy forwarded to me with a couple of items for consideration that I had pulled out right at the top, and then a few suggestive revisions throughout. But I didn't dive too far into this, because solar and hazardous materials are both really, there's no one-size-fits-all bylaw. It totally depends on what your community is really interested in preserving, what your natural resources are, what your specific concerns are. So, there are things that we might want to add, and there are things that maybe I've flagged that are not that important to you. So, just on my initial read, the couple of things that I had highlighted were addressing battery concerns, since that is really an emerging technology with solar, and you're going to see more and more developers wanting to add that sort of technology. And right now, they're really being treated as accessory structures, so that's how they will be treated if there's not any specific language related to batteries. So, just something to consider if there's anything you want to add regarding fire protection, or any additional recalculation of surety bonds, anything along those lines, specifically for batteries.
Just to clarify, what's highlighted in yellow pertains to the batteries?
So, what's highlighted in yellow in this document is language you already had that I just wanted to flag as, this is, the pertinent structure section here would be what would apply to the batteries. So, if that looks good to you, then maybe we don't need additional language to clarify what sort of permitting process would happen for the batteries. And just generally, anything that's highlighted yellow is something that was already in here, and just maybe we want to take a closer look at it, or think about adding, or retracting something.
Okay, and the text in red, would that reflect your edits?
The text in red is anything that I added.
Okay. All right, so you focused a lot on the stormwater management piece?
I focused a lot on the stormwater management. So, the two primary things that I added here were bulking up the stormwater requirements a bit, and also adding a surety requirement based on a decommissioning planning estimate prepared by a professional engineer. I also added some language regarding notification ahead of ownership changes. That's also something that we're seeing a lot of communities roll in, since there is a lot of flipping with solar projects. Completely not necessary. That's your personal preference, but I did provide some sample language for that sort of clause.
Okay.
So, I guess I would be interested to hear, really, what your big concerns about solar are, so that we can make sure that those get addressed in whatever bylaw you end up putting out there for a vote.
Okay. Do you want, actually, do you mind if I just start with Fred for a second? Fred, did you get a chance to read the stormwater section?
No, I've got it tonight.
Oh, okay. So, I'll let you sit for a minute, so you can see that. I guess I'll start with the board. Anthony, do you have specific things that you had on your radar?
No, I'm not. So, beyond what Sarah highlighted here, which I think are really important, you know how I feel about decommissioning things, but batteries, I mean, so are we talking, so batteries or with solar? Because batteries could be in hazardous waste, too, right?
They certainly could, but with D O E R incentivizing battery storage as a supplement to solar, I think you're going to see new projects being proposed with the battery storage component, and also, if you have existing solar, I think you might see a lot of developers come back looking to add that battery storage.
Sure.
So, certainly, that's something that we could talk about in the hazardous materials discussion as well, but specifically for solar, they're normally very enclosed structures. So, really, they have been treated like accessory structures, just like, they kind of look like a storage unit. I'm not sure if you've ever seen one, but they're very contained. From my understanding, they are very safe, but there is a higher risk of fire than you would see with just a solar array.
Right, okay. No, I really didn't have anything further to add, but good points to look at.
Meli, do you have anything on your radar with solar?
Again, just to sort of maybe clarify, the battery storage is to supplement the power generated from the solar.
Right, so anything that couldn't directly go into the grid would just go into that battery system. And then, what that does is that helps the ISO, the independent service operator, balance out key energy to the end, so that it's not all, all these solar generators aren't pumping power to the grid during the day when they don't need a lot of power. They can then reserve that in the battery, and instead pump it into the grid at night when they do need the power.
Okay.
Amy?
Yeah, I guess I can, Carrie and I actually went to the CMRPC class, so I guess we have a little bit of an upper hand, because we got to hear what the problems were. There were a lot of people who came in front of the boards, and I typed up my notes. So, I guess I'll just ask, some of these are in here. There was something in the bylaw from Lester. They said limit tree clearing. That's something else we can add to our bylaw. They talked about how, in the past, there was a lot of tree clearing for solar, but they're now finding that it's better to put it on, like, the warehouses, or the lots that are already cleared. Lester had a good example where there was a residential development. It was totally cleared, but the builder defaulted, so they used that land for the solar. But they talked about how you might want something in your bylaw to limit tree clearing. We also learned that you can limit it in residential. You can actually prohibit it in residential, because there's no appellate case law yet, and there are no land use cases. So, as long as we don't prohibit it townwide, you can prohibit it in residential. And that's what a lot of these towns are having the major problems with. People were coming in and buying, like, a small house on a lot, and tearing it down, and it was becoming a solar farm in the middle of the neighborhood. And so, there are some towns, like a woman from Ware came up to me. She said they have eighteen solar farms in their town, and every planning board meeting is people complaining about solar farms next door to them. So, she's like, "Limit them in your neighborhood," or she said she would recommend prohibiting them in residential.
Can I just?
Sure.
I have a question on that for Sarah. Can we limit, I'm assuming we can limit the large scale from residential, but small scale, can we, or can we?
So, that was another thing that I had flagged, is that I think, no matter how you decide you want to treat it, I think that we do need to define what small scale is, and how that gets permitted. So, those system sizes under two hundred and fifty kilowatts, which was my first bullet point here. And just the way I'm reading this, I think that you are prohibiting it in residential lots, residential districts, correct? It looks like the, yes, it's including industrial.
Yeah, we had, I, let me see if we had, because we have two use tables, one that's all residential, and one that is...
Oh, you know what? I might just be looking at the commercial and industrial.
No, and that's okay. And you know what? I didn't, I didn't attach those pages to my version, but the, yeah, I think originally, that that's, we were only talking large scale, and that, and we only wanted it in the industrial district.
Right, so you certainly can prohibit large scale in residential districts. You could go as far as to prohibit those smaller-scale ones also. The tricky part with that is that those are typically accessory to another use, so it's hard to tell someone that they can't install a small-scale, ground-mounted solar farm in their yard. If they wanted to do a really little system in their backyard, it's kind of hard to say you can't.
Right.
But the large scale, absolutely, there's really no legal recourse for, as long as you're allowing it somewhere in town, it's fine.
What's considered small scale?
The definition in here is less than two hundred and fifty kilowatts. You're defining large scale in this draft as anything two hundred and fifty or more.
I guess I didn't have time to read all this, so I'm just going off my notes from the other night, just to see if...
What Sarah handed out is, you're all, you and we, we're just seeing it tonight for the first time.
Right, so that's why I'm just going off my list of what I learned at the meeting. I don't know if it's included in here or not.
This is the two thousand and fourteen draft bylaw, though, just for reference.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I just want to go down my list, and another thing they said to do is effectively screen, and that's probably in this bylaw. We'll make sure we effectively screen it. And you talked about the notice provision, where the town can be notified thirty days before ownership changes, because that's really important. Another thing that was talked about the other night was pilot agreements. What these towns have found is that there's loopholes in the solar, and there've been solar companies that come in, and they put in these large-scale developments, and they clearcut the trees, and then they call themselves a nonprofit, and they pay no taxes. So, they said to have a pilot agreement upfront, where you, they can pay the taxes twenty years out front. And there was even a man on the panel, and he was a solar company. He said that the solar companies actually like the pilot agreements, because then they get, they know what their costs are upfront, and they know these are the taxes that they pay for the next twenty years. But it also protects the town, because these towns are finding that they're not getting any tax revenue from them at all now, because of the loophole. So...
I would just caution on the pilot agreement piece, that that isn't something that you can require in your bylaw, because it requires a vote. So, it puts the town in a really bad position if you say you must negotiate a pilot, and then it goes to vote, and it fails, because now you've prohibited that developer from building their project that you approved, because the pilot didn't get approved. So, you have to really just be careful with how that's worded. We could absolutely add a provision that says, developer must...
Like, as a condition, if this is special permitted, have a special permit condition list, and it can say, "Consider a pilot agreement," just so when it comes in front of us, we don't forget. You know, there's so many things going on, and we might forget to ask for that pilot agreement, and then have regrets later.
Right, so my recommendation on that would be to word it such that the developer will propose a pilot agreement. And then, if it fails, then that's something that will have to get addressed at that point. But I don't think that legally, under Mass general law, you could hinge an approval on a developer getting a pilot agreement.
Okay, so, when you say the developer will propose a pilot agreement, that's, you mean it's not in the actual bylaw?
We could definitely put language in the bylaw. We just can't say, "Must get approval" for a pilot agreement.
Sure, consider.
Yes.
Do something in there as a little reminder, that we could ask, even if we don't get it. At least, it's something to ask for.
Can you require a draft pilot agreement?
Yeah, we could.
You submitted with the application, and then they could think about...
So, we could go that route. We could say, "Must submit draft pilot agreement," and then that's something that would go before for a vote, and hopefully pass.
There's also something that they said, one of the, someone in the audience said, "Planning board should monitor with yearly reports," and that actually helps to keep track of ownership, facility, and surety. And that you can enforce it by both the leasing and the owner. I guess a lot of it went into setbacks in screening, and the batteries. The batteries were huge. A lot of towns are being caught off guard, and they said that you should have something in there, that if a solar company does a solar farm, and they come back and they want to add the battery, that it's not a minor site plan review. This actually has to come back in front of the planning board. And, I don't know where my second page is, but it said that you should definitely have a peer review on citing those. They were really big on the peer review for the solar and the batteries, because they said it had to do with noise, fire, there's gas inside the enclosures, that there's a lot of concerns with the batteries. Because I guess it's really hard to get hooked up, interconnection with the grid, so that's why they're implementing the batteries?
No, so I think that that comment was around, they want to locate the battery structure as close to the grid as humanly possible. So, they're not always in a location that makes sense from a screening perspective, because the developers are trying to put them as close to the transmission lines as they can, and that's typically close to the property boundary. So, that's where screening becomes very important for something like a battery system.
Okay, so those were my main takes out of that meeting the other night, and I was just hoping they were implemented in our bylaw.
Yeah, so, we can definitely talk about screening. I did not touch that section from the two thousand and fourteen draft, so it's in Section F Design Standards, and it's Item Three. So, the way it's written currently, "At a minimum half of the provided front, side, and rear yard setback areas shall be designed to reduce visual impact." Really means vegetation, landscape elements. Are folks comfortable with that, or do we think it needs to be a little bit more aggressive in terms of screening?
Carrie?
Yeah, oh, sure.
I just don't, the, from what I remember, when we first did this bylaw, the planning board at the time probably spent most of their time on this training section, and I think it's pretty, it's pretty robust. But I don't know how it compares, and not that that's good or bad, but how it compares to other towns. But I do know there was a lot of, like, this is more than what's in our landscaping buffers that we require for any other use in town. And I, and I think that maybe, you know, I don't know if the board can, you know, make very specific comments tonight. I don't know if people looked at the bylaw prior to coming in tonight, you know, to what, to what we had proposed, you know, several years ago or not. But I do, you know, just for background on that, I know that there was quite a bit of time. Were you on the board, Amy, at the time?
No, I think I sat in the audience that year, but I think I was on the board the next year.
Okay. So, only Michelle, I guess, would have the, any memory of that. But I do know that that was a big deal with the board, as far as providing extra buffers for this. Sarah, can I ask you about the ownership? Just, I'm just not familiar with that, as to why, why that's like a sticking point?
So, if we're not, it isn't for every town, but I think typically, it makes it easier to get in contact if you have an issue, if you need to contact somebody because there's been some sort of emergency. You want to know who the owner is, and you don't want to be scrambling and calling Brago when it turns out that they sold it to that company.
Didn't someone in the audience say that you have to transfer the decommissioning and the surety with each owner? So, if you don't know the owner, and the owners change, and you don't come up with a plan to transfer that to the new owner, then you go to decommission at the end, and they'll say, "Well, he was three owners ago. That's him. That's not me." So, every time it transfers hands, you have to keep track of the owners, because you want to make sure those conditions go with the new owner.
So, I don't have a great grasp on how that piece works, but it's my understanding that money is held in escrow, and any developer that is selling their project, that knows, "I put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in an escrow account," they're going to get that money from whoever they sell the project to. So, my understanding is that that money would still be held in escrow to be tied to the project for decommissioning, and I think that that would have been worked out as part of the sale. So, I'm not sure how true that piece is. But that is also a consideration that would happen with ownership changing.
No, my impression from the developer on the panel talked about, it almost was like they expected to change hands, like, someone would be in charge of even getting the permits, and then they would sell it to, so there was almost like an expected number of hands that would change.
Right, a lot of developers that build solar have no interest in managing solar, and all of the energy credits, and that sort of thing that goes along with it. There are companies that really just specialize in that. So, a lot of times, you will see the company that designs, and constructs, and then maintains and operates, they're all different companies.
Right, so then, in that case, part of the ownership piece was, once you, so you meet with the original crew, and, you know, the development team works with them, and you lay out all these conditions that you want, but then someone new comes, and they don't have no frame of reference to what you've already talked about. So, it, there was a, there was a point brought up of how you then meet with the new owners to review the conditions that you outlined for the first owner, so that there's no misunderstanding or misinformation. So, it just gives staff an opportunity to then reestablish those conditions, and make sure that they're still followed through. So, I don't know if that's part of what was intended with this ownership change component.
So, this language is solely for a notification. You could absolutely add language that requires a meeting whenever there's ownership change, and this also does not include any sort of requirement for annual reporting. You could also definitely add something to that effect, but I would just caution you that that really becomes your responsibility to hunt that down, and to harass those developers to get that annual reporting. So, that is definitely some additional oversight on the part of the planning board.
Add that to our stormwater.
I know.
One of the things that we do with our earthwork board is we make the permits good for one year, and they have to come back and renew every year.
Okay.
It's one way of doing it. Not necessarily ideal for, for the board to have, you know, the same project come in every year, but...
Well, I wonder, well, that brings up a question about whether this is, we originally proposed this as allowed by right, and maybe you would mention something about doing it by special permit. Can we, can we do it by special permit, or does it have to be allowed by right someplace?
So, Northborough is a green community, correct? It has to be allowed by right someplace then, in order to keep your green community status.
So, then if it's allowed by right...
You can't have it renewed every year.
Right, yeah. There's nothing that would trigger them, yeah.
Well, earthwork is intended to be temporary, and that's why the annual report renewal is good.
So, I guess I have more questions about small scale, and so I don't want to get off large scale, that it's...
No, does anyone have, Anthony, did you have a follow-up question about something?
My question, one question I had was, when we talk about, I think it's two hundred and fifty kilowatt systems being the, defining how small. Is there, like, a footprint that that would normally take, a two hundred and fifty kilowatt system, that you can reference, or?
It is really difficult to say, even since my first solar project that I worked on five years ago, and today, the footprints have changed so rapidly, because the technology is changing so rapidly. And so, it will really depend on what the developer is proposing. If they're proposing trackers that rotate the full one hundred and eighty degrees, then they're going to have bigger roof spacing. So, that two hundred and fifty kilowatt footprint is going to be a lot bigger than a system that's using fixed tracking. So, it's difficult to come up with a standard.
Could you say, like, well, maybe it would be, like, you know, forty thousand square feet, or an acre, two acre, whatever?
There is absolutely the option to make that size threshold, square footage, instead of kilowatts. There, communities do it that way.
And can we, can the board make it, or the town make it, that you, you have to use either an existing parking lot, or a rooftop, as opposed to raw land? So that, so that whether it's a field or not, so that there is no clearing. Can we be that specific to say that?
I think that that presents a little bit of a problem under Mass general law, because the fact of the matter is that if you don't have roofs that can structurally support the system, or if you don't have property owners who are willing to lease their parking lots or their roofs, then you're now unduly regulating solar.
Okay.
Before we move on to small scale, I just, I did have a question about farmland. So, one thing that seems like a prime spot, I don't know if it's covered in this already. Is farmland covered in this already? I don't think so.
Nope, it is not, but that was actually a question that I had in my mind.
Well, I was wondering, you know, is it worth bringing in, we have quite a few farms in town, bringing in the owners of those farms, and like, how does, what do you recommend for determining, you know, what, what would they like to see for their land? Do we, should we limit it? Do they, do they want it? Do they not? I don't, I don't know if there's a recommendation or best practice there.
So, I come from doing a lot of projects in Western Mass, so I've done a lot of solar fields on agricultural land, and there are really two different schools of thoughts. There are the folks that want to preserve those prime agricultural soils, and they don't want to see any sort of development go in there. Or if they do, they're requiring some sort of soil stockpile plan to preserve any prime ag soils. And then, there are those where the farmers are saying, "I can't make any money farming my land. I'm going to make a lot more money if I lease it to a solar developer." So, in my experience, the folks who are anti-solar on agricultural lands are not actually the farmers. They're the Department of Agriculture. So, it's, it really might be worth having a conversation with the farmers in your town, to see what their appetite for that sort of thing is. And we could figure out how to address it the most responsibly in the bylaw, based on what they say. D O E R does incentivize dual-use agriculture and solar, where you see the panels lofted up higher, so that you can still have crops underneath them. That's something that's really heavily incentivized in the state right now, and not a lot of people are doing it. So, if you thought that might be a good way to develop more solar in your town, we could try to make it more appealing in this bylaw.
We, the majority of our agricultural land is APR land, so we're very lucky in that sense. And I don't know if the APR restrictions, you know, if there's, now, these were done back, back in the early eighties, that our, that our two largest farms came, you know, became APR properties. So, I don't know if they even thought about solar in the, you know, as far as from the Department of Agriculture. So, I don't know if that, you know, it's just something to ask about, or for us to investigate, as to whether or not, you know, with an agricultural preservation restriction, if you can even do anything like that.
Right, I can do a little bit of digging to that regard. I don't think that there are restrictions on solar under the APR, but I will double-check.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Kathy and Fred, do you have additional questions, it sounds like?
My questions revolve around the smaller scale. Now, is that the, is that what's, that, that's more than household use?
Yes, two hundred and fifty, definitely more than household. I want to say that seven kilowatts is enough to power your standard house. So, that's, two fifty is definitely more than a residential system.
So, who would be doing, I guess, a small scale? Not, not have, we only, we have one solar application, I mean, we've many, many residences who have solar. But we have one commercial operation that's in a parking lot, that's the, you know, the raised panels.
Right.
So, that's, that's our only experience so far with commercial. So, who would, who and why would do a smaller one?
So, two fifty might be a parking lot canopy system, like what you've experienced. It might be solar on top of an office building, something with a little bit more rooftop real estate than a residence would have.
Okay.
Or it might be someone who is putting a really small, ground-mounted system in their backyard.
Okay. So, is, to, to add small-scale solar, would, would it, would it fit into this bylaw, or would it be a separate bylaw? Would we have to have, and I don't even know if you had a chance, Sarah, to look at any, anything like that. Is it, is it a separate bylaw, and under a green community, is it something that we have to allow as of right?
You definitely don't have to allow it as of right in every district, if you're not comfortable with that. I don't think it needs to be a separate bylaw, but I do think that small-scale solar systems need to be addressed in your use table somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
And normally, something of that size is going to be an accessory use, as I said before, so it might just be as simple as that, that you're noting that small-scale solar systems, two hundred and fifty kilowatts or less, are treated as an accessory use and permit as such.
So, we went to a class about zoning amendments, and I thought that the lawyer had said that small scale is not, is, is part of the exemption period, like, you can do whatever you want for small scale. It's the large scale that may not be subject to exemption, to be determined by how, if anything, you know, goes through the courts. So, does that mean we still can put it in, or we can still regulate it until told otherwise, in your opinion, or?
So, when you say exemption, do you mean the MGL forty A? So when you say exemption, do you mean the MGL 40A, the protecting?
I'm not sure. Do you remember, Amy?
I don't remember that statement about the small scale, but I think you do mean the MGL 40A.
Okay. So that language is, does not specifically apply to large scale, it applies to just solar generally.
Okay, okay, that's good to know then.
But yeah, as long as you are allowing it somewhere in your town, you are not unduly regulating solar. So those small-scale systems, you can say that you don't want them in certain districts, if that's how you feel. But 250 kilowatts are mostly going to be roof-mounted systems, so I think they are probably going to be the types of systems that you're looking to do on already-used sites, so.
And, and again, because we're a green community, we have to allow small scale someplace? And I'm not anti-small scale, I'm just, it's just we've always concentrated on large scale, so, and maybe, and like you said, it doesn't sound like it's that much different, but, but do we need to allow it someplace by right?
The language for green communities, I think, is just that solar must be allowed somewhere by right. So if, if you're allowing large scale somewhere by right, I think you're covered, as far as green communities are concerned.
Okay.
So how do small-scale systems get permitted now?
The, as far as residential, they, they just go to the building department.
Okay.
And, and, and just through a building permit application.
So in effect, they are by right currently?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. But it just doesn't say that anywhere in, in our bylaw. And we've taken that the, that where 40A says you cannot prohibit solar, that's, that's where, that's how we've said it's allowed in residential districts.
I'd be curious too, to see how big 250 kilowatts is. Like, can we make our small scales smaller? Like, do we have to have our small scale set at 250 kilowatts? It sounds big to me, but maybe it isn't. Is it like six panels?
Well, maybe that's the, maybe that's why we do it by square foot.
Right.
Rather than...
Amount of kilowatts.
Perhaps a combination of minimum amount of square feet or minimum amount of kilowatts. That way, if technology changes and more kilowatts can be produced from a smaller footprint, you're still allowing it. But if you, what you want to do is target the area that's going to be disturbed, and figure out what that area is that, that concerns you, whether it's 20,000 or 40,000 square feet, and say, if it's 250 or 20,000 square feet, whichever is less, would be the governing factor for submitting an application.
Yeah, I would actually recommend probably doing a footprint size threshold rather than a kilowatt capacity for that reason, because the technology does change so rapidly, and if you say 250 kilowatts, and you're already feeling like that might be big, soon they're going to be able to, you know.
Is there a storage component with small scale, or is that unlikely?
There could be a storage component with small scale. There are some people that are powering their homes off of small-scale solar with a battery component, so that they're not even on the grid anymore.
So is that covered in what we currently have for the battery piece of it? Or is it a whole different ballgame with a small-scale battery versus the?
So right now, there isn't a battery piece. So that was something that I wanted to talk about tonight. Right now, batteries would just get regulated under this apartment structures language, since there isn't any battery-specific language. And that would apply to small or large scale.
Okay.
Can you speak to the safety of the, the battery units? I mean, any battery can be wildly explosive, and I can imagine what means large-scale one. I don't, I don't know anything about how they would contain, if they were breached, or if something were to happen, or, I don't know if you can speak to it at all.
So that is definitely not my area of expertise, but those systems are very closely monitored, and they're very well ventilated. The ones that I have worked on, we haven't had any issues with. That said, there is obviously a higher fire risk, so if that's something that is concerning, I would recommend maybe adding some additional language about working with the fire department, about working with emergency responders, to really nail down what the emergency response plan is.
Okay. And Fred, I don't know if you even had a chance to look at the stormwater stuff. Did anything stand out?
Um, nothing stands out at all, seems appropriate. I think that it may be a little redundant, and if you wanted to focus the solar bylaw on the aspects of the disturbance and the battery and the solar power, then that stormwater stuff might be covered under the requirements of a site plan approval. So it's, it's okay if it's in there again, but it might, might be covered there as well already.
I have a quick question on the battery as well, if, because there's some concerns about decommissioning the solar power. Should the battery component be separately managed as a decommissioned unit, or?
So typically, one of the reasons that you really want to be asking for a decommissioning plan is because it breaks down exactly what they're going to decommission, whether it's breaking down access roads, it's breaking up concrete equipment pads. They're going to do line-by-line, every single rack, every single panel, and tell you what they're removing and how much it's going to cost. So the battery would 100% be a part of that. And if it were added at a separate time, it's really important that there's language to say, you need to update the decommission plan, you need to update the estimate to include that battery equipment.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board on what we're looking at? Maybe, and obviously there's a lot to read, so we can certainly take additional time at some point, but just off the, well, we have Sarah here, anything we want to ask?
Henry's question.
Okay, sure.
I have six questions. Henry's going to answer, so you can do a quick guide. The solar farm that's on the corner of Rice Avenue and Colvin Street, is that a large or a small solar? As you drive, Colvin Street, Rice Avenue, look up in the hill, there's a solar farm up there.
Is that the parking lot one that you meant?
No, no.
No, it's a house.
National Grid, there is one sitting up on that hill there. You can see those solar panels. Are you familiar with those, Fred?
No, I don't think, went through a site plan approval.
Yeah, we'll have to check with Bob.
Yeah, I've been there for quite a while. The second question is, I believe there's a special tax rate on agricultural land. Like, I don't have a...
Here in Northborough?
Yeah.
Well, if you, if you participate in what's called Chapter 61, 61A or 61B?
Yes. If they put solar panels, do they still keep that, or do they go to regular tax rates on their farm land?
I have no idea.
Okay, next question. Is there an EMI footprint on these batteries or anything else? Anytime you have high voltage, any, any voltage, you have an EMI field that comes out. Is there any criteria, measurements of the EMI field around the batteries? Are you familiar with them?
They talked about the EMF.
EMS.
I'm sorry, EMF.
Okay, yes. So the, what they actually emit, they're very contained, is my understanding, and they are held to the same standards that any sort of transmission lines or electrical equipment would be. That's something that you could ask for, is a study of that sort of thing, and that's something that you could absolutely measure in your peer review also, as well as the noise that, that battery, or any of the inverters or the transformers might make.
Do we have a, do we have a, a rule as to how high these fences are, what type of fences they are, and so forth, and not just a, a C2 fence which kind of beats what, what we're trying to achieve?
I think the language in the draft is a site impervious fence of a maximum six feet in height.
Okay, okay. And I think you mentioned that, Sony, as far as the decommission, I think that all the decommissions should be a qualified company. There must be a list of qualified companies for decommissioning these batteries and so forth. You don't want somebody that says, I can decommission a battery, I'll do it for you cheap. I think you want to, I assume there's a qualified list of people who can decommission these batteries?
So the decommissioning would likely be done by a contractor, very similar to the folks who construct it.
Who's qualified to decommission.
Right. So the plan does not typically state who will actually do the decommission. If, if we would like to require that, we can, but...
When I say who, I mean qualified, somebody who's qualified that states.
I, I mean, we should look into it, but I, it's, the, the battery isn't mostly some sort of chemical, lithium, something, whether it's iron polymer, but it's a hazardous waste, it's got to be regulated. I'm sure there's something by the state that says it has to be somebody who's licensed or whatever, the material's.
Sarah, would a demolition permit be required for the decommissioning? Or would it be just automatically granted when the board says the project is at the end of its useful life?
I think it depends on what your regulations require, and also what is being proposed. I think if they're removing roads and jackhammering up equipment pads, that is probably more land disturbance, and that would likely trigger the use for something like, the need for something like that. If the property owner wants them to leave some of those things in place, then maybe just pulling the racking out wouldn't necessarily require a demolition permit.
During the use of the solar farm, is it common to have to change the battery over the life of the farm, period, you know, maybe so many, five years, 10 years? Do the batteries wear out before the solar panels? I'll ask this question.
I'm not sure that we have any that have been deployed long enough to know the answer to that question.
So we may have, if there is something where the batteries are, I mean, I guess the, the developer would, or whoever owns the property would be responsible anyway for replacing, and, and in terms of disposal, so we don't need to regulate replacement or disposal or anything?
I wouldn't think so. I, also, it's my understanding that these batteries are supposed to last about 30 years, which is pretty consistent with what the solar fields are lasting. So I would think that you shouldn't be having batteries having to get changed. But again, things happen, might need to do repairs or anything along that nature, so I'm not sure if that's any sort of language that you want to put in around qualified professionals or anything of that nature.
Okay. Those are great questions, thank you. Millie, were you going to say something else?
Nope.
Oh, sorry, I thought I saw you, okay. I don't think I have any other questions. Unless there's anyone who has any other questions? Okay.
I don't.
All right, this, let's see. So as a follow-up step, oh, let's see, you had for consideration up here. Are these things we all talked about?
I think that we touched on all of these.
Yeah, and then, and then there was a couple others too, Carrie.
Oh, okay.
The, I mean, I, what I'm, what I'm gathering from your conversation is that, is that you, you know, you want to, that you agree with these, the, the five bullets that Sarah had put together, and then in addition, you're looking for a footprint regulation for both small and large scale?
Oh, yeah, I didn't think, can we regulate the footprint for large scale, or is that?
Yep. So a lot of communities do it that way. They don't specify a system size as far as generation is concerned at all. It's, if you're more than two acres, you're considered large scale. So that's a way that you could do it.
And when you say Sarah's five bullets, is that just, am I looking at the text in red? Is that the?
Uh, the four consideration up at the top.
Oh, the considerations, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, in, in addition to what, you know, Sarah has put in the red, again, you know, to, to, to have some direction on this, I'm, I didn't hear anyone disagree with, you know, addressing those five bullets, and then in addition, adding language about a footprint.
Mm-hmm.
We also add language about the limit of tree clearing. I think Lester said they have that in their bylaws. She said you could add something, and that might help it go on something that's already cleared, or a parking lot, or a roof. I think Lester said they had something in their bylaws that limits the amount of tree clearing. I don't know how it would be written, I just remember she said, you know, see if you can limit the tree clearing.
So there's a couple of ways that you can do that. You can either specify a maximum lot coverage. So if you have a 50-acre parcel and you say you can only use 50% of this for solar development, then that in theory is going to keep at least 50% of your vegetation.
Yep.
Or you can actually put a maximum X square feet.
Oh, I guess the footprint would take care of that too. If we have a footprint for large and small, I guess you can only limit?
Well, not necessarily, because if you have a five-acre parcel and you're installing a five-acre solar field, then that's all your trees.
Okay. So one of my notes did say only allow 50% of the lot to be developed. So that must go with the limit of the tree clearing?
So we, we have a, and, and it's not, you know, it, it would need to be, I think, beeped up based on conversations tonight, but, you know, there's just, there's a, in the, and again, it's not the existing bylaw, but what we had originally worked with, under G, there's a land clearing, soil erosion, habitat impact.
Okay.
So perhaps that's, you know, that language needs to be, you know, perhaps that's where it could be added.
Okay.
So I don't have as great an understanding of what parcels are available in town as you all probably do. If we were to add language saying maximum 50% of the lot can be developed, is that prohibitive? Or are there parcels, you think, that could support solar development if they can only use half the lot?
If, just off the top of my head, the, there are two fairly large industrial properties that do not contain any structures right now. And then there, in a different area of town, there's another large parcel, but it's, it's probably going to be developed within the next year or so. So there, in the industrial district, there are at least right now two properties that, that would work. And then in a, we have one industrial district, but it's in three different areas of town.
Right.
So, so there's, so there's, there's definitely a spot, at least one spot in each one of those.
Okay.
That, that, that would, if someone wanted to pursue this.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Amy, did you have something else?
Nope, I was just going to say, so that would be good, because then we can add that, only 50% lot coverage.
And then if we had language, if they were to add batteries, I don't know how the board feels about coming back as a site plan for the, a separate site plan, if they were to add something like the batteries, or if that makes sense. Is that standard, you think, Sarah? That's on a, if they were to add batteries, they would come back with a site plan?
That's, yeah. It's, I think that more and more towns, as more and more developers are trying to scramble to add storage, are either wishing that they had that sort of provision, or they're adding it.
Because they said it's really important to do the peer review when the batteries come in.
Because, well, yeah.
So if they don't come in front of us, then we wouldn't be able to do a peer review.
Because there, in addition to the noise concerns and the fire hazard concerns, there are also stormwater management concerns. You're putting more impervious surface, that was not accounted for in the initial obligation.
Okay. And then one other thing too, just minor, is in the screening landscape buffer, I, I would like to see it maintained in perpetuity, or something to that effect, so that it's not, you know, a couple of little trees and they die in a year, and then everybody's looking at the solar farm, so.
I agree. I don't know where it is, but I would agree with that.
I'm just looking at design standards.
Number F?
Okay.
On the, sort of the top of...
Oh, landscape buffer.
Yeah, the number three, screening landscape buffer.
Yeah. I don't know how the board feels about that. That's something I'd like to see.
I'd agree with that.
I would suggest adding that to the operations and maintenance plan, so under Section D, item number five. And while we're all looking at that, I would just ask if there's anything else. Do we think that there needs to be language in there about clearing access roads of snow, or anything to that effect?
Is that not inherent with include measures for maintaining safe access, do we have to specifically list out what that entails?
Nope, that is probably fine, I would just make sure when you're reviewing that they do explicitly say that they are going to plow, because that's something that I've run into a lot.
I think we should add it then, like, anything that you've run into a lot, I think we should add to our bylaws, so we can learn from the mistakes of others.
So what, just like you're asking, what size are these battery facilities? What do they add to the, the site plan?
So it, a lot of them look just like this rig that we have here for the AV.
Okay, so if, should there be something that also maintains those hidden from neighbors, residential areas? Or is that included in the whole soul?
I think that that would be included just in the general screening requirements, since they're going to be within the footprint of the project. They're not going to be outside of the, the set, they shouldn't be outside of the setbacks or anything.
Okay, got it. Okay. Do we need to settle anything else on here before moving on to hazardous? And then are we adding, um, small scale to the use tables, is that something we wanna do?
Yeah, yeah, and anything that's associated with small scale, because we wanna, we needed to add it to the table and then, um, to do a footprint, um, you know, regulation on that or a fo- a max.
Should we, I didn't even look, it might even be here, there are some things, um, where we add at the end, there are no use variants, like we did for the marijuana, should we add that clause at the end? That no use variance would be allowed on this section?
I mean, you could, if, you know, what, because what that does is it prevents, um, you know, it going into one of the business districts, you know, if that, if that's how you wanna do it.
I think so, it'd stop like, that's a little loophole that gives somebody.
I'll send you that, Sarah, that's just.
Okay, I, I would just caution on that piece.
We may not be able to.
What happens if all three of your industrial properties that you think are available for solar get developed? And now there's absolutely nowhere that they can build. And you've also put in a clause that says they can't get a use variance.
Oh, okay, then again, that goes back to the community's of, of where, of that it has to be allowed someplace.
Well, not even just that, but tha- then you're going to end up in court, because developers are going to say, I can't build anywhere.
We've effectively prohibited it, okay.
But I think we have more than, I mean, I would guess there are even more, like, I think those are the two or three major ones. I think you can use other lots too, like, say we have warehouses that aren't being used, those could be used. Or, didn't we say those big new warehouses that were put on, on Bartlett Street, don't those support solar?
I, um, I believe that it was, that it was something that the board asked if they were going to put solar, but it's not, you didn't require those, and I, I don't know that you can at this point, but that, it, I don't believe that the board required that, that that construction be done so that it supports, you know, a future, um, solar, you know, utility on, on, on the roofs. I don't think that was in any of the decisions. You had asked each of the applicants if they were going to do it though. At least that's my recollection.
Well, um, Kathy, if you can send me the variance language that you would use for the marijuana development, then I can maybe do some fact checking and see if that would be considered prohibitive for solar.
Okay, all right, great, that's super helpful, um, any last comments before we switch to hazardous?
No.
Okay, hazardous materials. So this did not, this, the red text is additions, this would be the edits to the bylaw.
So this is, this is just food for thought, more than anything else. I had spoken a little bit with Kathy about what some of the concerns around hazardous materials are. And my feeling is that you don't need an entire standalone bylaw for hazardous materials, but I think that there are opportunities to add some clarifying language to the use table, to different sections of your bylaw, just to make sure that any concerns that you have are being addressed without having to reinvent the wheel. Um, so what I did was I went through your bylaw a little bit and just pulled out a couple of areas where I thought that we could add a definition, we could add a line in the use table, we could maybe add a little bit, um, stricter buffers, um, in certain districts that might abut residential districts for this sort of use. And before we really draft anything more formal than this, I guess I just wanted to hear what people's concerns specifically are, whether it's groundwater or abutting residential uses or noise. That way we can make sure that those concerns all get addressed.
Okay, Amy, do you wanna start, this is one of your hot topics a little bit?
Right, well, I would think all of those, because, um, the hazardous waste facilities we have now are in commercial, they're on commercial properties, they abut neighbors who have wells, and now we have trucking that comes in and out. So I guess I just wanted something that would prohibit something from, like that, from happening again. And sometimes if you're, say you're a hazardous waste facility and you wanna site somewhere, you look around and you say, well, Hudson and Shuseberry has a bylaw where they prohibit us, but Northborough doesn't, so maybe I'll try there. So I just wanted something more prohibited in Northborough, so they don't see Northborough and say, oh, well, look, they have one on Main Street. And I just wanted to have some more protection for our town, so we don't look so vulnerable and.
Anthony, did you have any?
I know, sorry, no, I just noticed some surrounding towns had them.
Anthony, did you have any?
I have nothing to add to that, but I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So at first, when I looked down this, I see, um, hazardous waste facility, and I know they're exempted per the state and they're only, um, allowed in industrial. So I see them added to Business South and Highway Business, and so I feel like we're actually opening up more areas to add them. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it, adding them in Business South and Highway Business, because, because now we're being more lenient than even the state.
Wait, i- if it's, does it need to be by right in one area as an exempt use? Or, so right now this is permits only, is that, or that's not the case?
That I don't know.
This is, that's also a piece I don't have a great understanding.
I, I know, in a way, it's always allowed by, in industrial. So if you don't put it anywhere in your town, it goes in industrial.
Okay.
Or anywhere else, your town could choose another location, but by right, they can go in industrial. But what I was learned in the exemption class I went to is you can have a hazardous bylaw to add buffers. So by right, they can go into industrial, but if your industrial borders residential, you're gonna want more than a hundred feet. Like, I think Hudson has, it's a mile from a residential. You're gonna want certain buffers, or else it can go by right in any industrial area, whether it's next to a school, whether it's next to a house. So I guess that's what I wanted to do, I just wanted, I know it's allowed in industrial, so I would only allow it in industrial, and then I would add buffers, kinda like with the solar. You'd wanna landscape buffer, you'd want a buffer from noise.
Well, you did add a footnote here, well, you said add a footnote about increasing the setbacks when abutting a residential district.
Right, so I, I guess I would be interested, um, to find what you think an appropriate setback, abutting a residential district would be, and it would just be an industrial, I'd strike these other two.
In solid waste, I'd have to look to, into, like, that is mentioned too in the exemption, but it's a little different than the hazardous, so I don't, I don't know if those are allowed by right in industrial. But we probably wouldn't want those in Business South or Highway Business either, because Business South borders a neighborhood, and we probably wouldn't wanna use our prime highway land for a dump. So again, if we had to allow solid waste, I think that should probably be in industrial, but not the other two.
Wait, is that an exempt, is that exempt as well, solid waste or no?
I would assume you have to allow it by right at least in industrial, I, I don't know if, if it has any more protections than that. Um, I can, we can definitely strike those two business districts, though, but I do think you need to address solid waste somewhere. I noticed that there wasn't really a definition of a solid waste disposal facility in your bylaw and that it wasn't really addressed in the use table, so I figured we would add it while we were going through this exercise.
So the risk is without being in there, it can go anywhere?
I, I just think that the risk is with it out being, without it being in there, people don't know what they have to do. And if it's more clearly defined, then either they're immediately deterred because they know the hoops they have to jump through, or it saves you guys from dealing with people who think that they can just go and build things when they do need to go through a review process.
Because usually if it's not permitted, it's prohibited, so if it wasn't in there, it should be prohibited, but maybe.
But if it's exempt?
But it might be.
If it's exempt, it would be industrial.
We'll have to look into that, because, again, the waste facility is not in our zoning bylaw, but it would have to be allowed by state statute, so, so solid waste may be the same.
So then it's your authority to regulate how it's buffered and how it's regulated with regards to drinking water resources and that sort of thing.
Okay, so, and you did put drinking water in here as well, wait, that was in here, potential edit.
Yes, so, um, I had, yeah, this text that I had added was within one thousand feet of a gravel packed well that was used as a source of municipal, or we could make that private, I'm not sure how many private wells we think that this might affect if it's only an industrial. Um, but these are typically uses that you would see prohibited near drinking water sources. So this seems like a good time to roll those in and say, you can't build this sort of thing if it's going to affect anyone's drinking water. And I had just pulled down a couple pieces from the bylaw as it's written currently and highlighted a few pieces that I think already protect you a little bit in instances where you might have someone coming in with a hazardous materials facility or a solid waste facility, because I think a lot of the language is already there.
Okay, Kathy or Fred, do you have questions about, or comments about this section?
No, I don't at, at this time, but.
So the drinking water component currently does not exist at all, or you just added D and E to what's there?
So the reason I had actually pulled that piece out and I inserted, um, just a snip of the map that shows these groundwater protection overlays, you can see that a lot of the industrial areas are covered by this, so if you're prohibit, prohibiting these uses in areas where they're exempt and they can go, then I think that might get you into a little bit of trouble, which is part of the reason that I had pulled out this red text, to say maybe instead of saying prohibiting these uses in area one and areas two and three for the groundwater protection, we make it within one thousand feet of a well. And again, I'm not sure where all the wells are, so maybe that is even more prohibitive, but it's something to consider, because when you do look at this map and you see the little pockets where someone could actually come in with one of these facilities, it's not a lot of real estate.
So the pockets are the circles that are clear?
The, yep, the pink circles that are clear.
Or where they could go?
Yep.
Okay, so even looking at, one concern of mine has always been the high school over there by industrial. Um, it looks like even still, the area three, that first circle is pretty far out from the location of the high school in general, it looks like.
Typically with the, these areas that you see, it, you know, and, and again, let's just focus on the industrial district for a second, but, um, the areas that you see that are not in a groundwater district, it's basically elevation. You know, these are noles or, or hills, um, that, uh, you know, and that's the main reason why they're not part of the, you know, of the groundwater area or the, the aquifer area.
So that one on the lower left, that, is that Avalon area?
Yeah, down in the, down in the southwest.
Yeah, the pink.
Yeah, that's the whole, that's the, that whole Northborough Crossing area.
Yeah, so this doesn't show if it's already developed, so that whole area is probably already developed, right?
Um, not, not the whole area, but I mean, that's just based, this, this map.
Yeah.
Okay, it's just a snapshot of showing you where the industrial district is and then where the groundwater overlay district is. So, so the, basically, all of Northborough Crossing and Avalon is built on a hill.
Yep.
So, you know, just real simply, that's, that, topography wise, that's not part of the, you know, area one, two, or three.
And it's already developed, so you really couldn't put a hazardous waste up there.
Um, well, you ha- no, there's quite a bit of land that's not developed over there. I mean, you have, you have all of Kimball Sand, um, you have areas that could be redeveloped.
Okay.
You know, I don't know how big, uh, uh, you know, I don't know how big these facilities need to be or, um, or, or typically are, but, you know, you, there's land in that, that part of town, you know, that, just like other parts of town where it could be redeveloped also.
Okay.
You know, you, you have to think about that too.
Well, does it, does it matter if it's developed or not? I mean, so we have to have, um, an area, so we, let's say it's industrial where we allow it, but everywhere that it would be allowed because of groundwater is already developed, do we need to worry about that? I mean.
Well, but you always have to think about anything can be redeveloped.
Right, so in the future, right, so. What I guess I'm saying is we don't need to make an, we don't have to make an exception and say, well, there, there has to be undeveloped land for hazardous waste, but, so, you know what I'm saying?
Well, but, well, I, I, I think so, so there is undeveloped land in, in all of these industrial areas. So there is undeveloped land to begin with, um, which I think is what the state looks at.
Right.
Um, you know, can, can it go someplace?
Right.
And that, and then on top of that, you know, I mean, just for everyone to, to think about, you know, you, there's always redevelopment.
Right.
Of, you know, a, a use could change. Um, I mean, the good thing is, is that, you know, people aren't knocking down our doors to, to, um, to do solar either, but, you know, to do the hazardous waste, so, you know, we don't have someone, you know, you know, chomping at your ankles, but, um, but at the same time, you know, I guess now is the time to address it, is where you, um, you know, we have one registered facility in town, um, it seems to be pretty non-existent, but, um, you know, they, they could start up anytime, you know, they haven't abandoned the site. You know, they're not there anymore, but they still own it, they still have an active, you know, license.
Okay.
What, what size is that, where is that?
The, the, um, three twenty-nine?
Westmang.
No, three forty-five.
Three forty-five.
Three forty-five, Westmang Street.
It is, okay, I didn't know if you were talking about another one.
No, no, there's only one in town.
That's what I thought, that was it, okay.
Okay, so understanding that our intent is to make sure we have something in place so that we're not, you know, forced to put something where it's not zoned, we wanna make sure we have the proper regulations in place, proper definitions, um, just really to protect ourselves. What you have here, and also to make sure there are the appropriate setbacks, what you have here, does that cover that intent? Or are we not covered for basically just managing risk on this for us?
No, so I think that if we add those two uses to the use table and specify that they're only allowed in industrials, that already is more production than you have. Um, and then additionally, just adding a footnote to that density and dimensional regulations table, do you want more than one hundred feet when abutting a residential district?
I would, I would think so.
I wouldn't think so, yeah.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we know it's appropriate without being too prohibitive, I guess? Like, what, you said they have a mile, I don't know, is that's?
Right, I mean, I guess how far from wells, how far out do you have to be to be safe, if, say, there is a spill?
The language that I see in a lot of bylaws is a thousand feet, which is why that was the, um, the proposed, if you wanted to do it from wells rather than those areas one, two, and three for groundwater protection, it would be a thousand feet.
From wells or residential? From wells or residential?
Yeah.
Does the board have any comments about that?
I'd be concerned about a thousand feet being too much where you'd prohibit just about any place on-
In industrial, though, you think?
Well, really, I mean, there's not a lot of places that, well, unless you're talking about future use, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean, all of, all of our industrial districts abut residential districts.
And we can probably do a map with the wells and, I mean, a quick map, just to see. I think, I think you could find a spot more than a thousand feet.
Well, from a well, it really isn't necessarily the issue. It's from, it sounds like what you're saying, from a residential district. And then, and then again, you know, this is where we get into, you know, you might want to look at what's in your cell tower bylaw, because we talk about to a district, you know, to the boundary line, and then also to a residential use that might not necessarily be in a residential district. You know, so you're protecting, because we have residences in business districts and in industrial districts. So, you know, you might want to, you know, look at that language and, and mirror that. I forgot how many feet, I think it's something about the size of the tower.
I think it was a thousand feet to a school. The size of the tower, it's like a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, that, that reg is, I mean, it's in our bylaw, so we, we can have it, but that's proven, you know, not necessary, but, um-
So it looks like on seven one one nine, you might cover it under, is it number four, it looks like, maybe?
You know, we have, in the, in the cell tower, we talk about in residential districts that the setback is four times the height of the tower. And then we talk about, you know, again, whether it's a residential structure, that's one requirement, and then a residential lot line, boundary line, excuse me. So, I mean, you might not, you know, have a number in your head tonight, but, I mean, we can, we can insert a number for you and then, you know, you can respond or react to that.
Just like we did for the marijuana, we threw in numbers and it showed how many spaces were left. So we could do the same thing with hazardous, throw in a number, and it will show how many spaces are left, assuming.
I don't, I honestly don't think a thousand feet seems like that much, it's, you know, two tenths of a mile.
Yeah, I don't think it's far either.
Yeah. Okay, what if we start with a thousand and then we'll take a look at what we have in cell tower? And maybe, how do we figure out how many, you know, would that leave enough land or developable land? Or how do we figure out what's left if we were to do that?
Well, yeah, we, I could talk to Sarah offline as to whether or not that's something that I can ask our, you know, G I S department to, to take a look at, or, and/or if that's something that's central mass, but, I mean, we can talk offline about that. But, you know, that's, it, it's, it's involved, I mean, it's definitely, the exercise is worth it, but, you know, it's not, it's not going to be done for the next meeting.
Okay. I think that's okay. Any other comments from the board on the?
No.
Any other comments from staff? Okay, this is great, this is super helpful, and thank you for taking the time to do all of this. This is, do you feel like you have a good spot to go next that we've given you?
I do actually just have one last question about the hazardous materials piece. Since trucking is potentially such a big part of this equation and the trucks are not necessarily only driving in industrial districts, I'm not sure if there would be an appropriate place in bylaw to insert some kind of hours of operation language so that people aren't getting wakened at six AM from trucks banging around and driving on residential streets.
I think we have, do we have that in general? Only in certain districts?
I think only for construction.
Oh, is it only construction?
So, yeah, that's, and I might have missed it when I was pulling out language that already applied to this sort of use, but I'll take a closer look and if it seems like for industrial uses we're lacking some of that, then maybe I'll just add.
Because that was some of the complaints at the other hazardous facility, you know, not only does, they start at six, but they start firing up the trucks at like five and they're in the lot, and they're like, hey, where are you going today, you know? So, yeah, the noise was a concern.
Do we have something in our bylaws about where the trucks that have hazardous waste on them can go?
No, they're, they're public streets, so you can't.
Okay.
The only limit that, that-
I know in some streets I've seen, you know, no flammable things on these roads or-
In our town?
Not in our town, no, in other towns.
Yeah, I mean, the only restriction I'm aware of is if there's a weight limit. Uh, excuse me, not a weight limit, a truck exclusion.
Yeah.
They do have signs for low or no salt areas so that if it's an area that could wash into the reservoir, for instance, then they do have those posted as no salt areas on roads around the reservoir.
Yeah, but I swear I've seen signs in some towns, and I'll look it up, that regulate what trucks carrying what materials can go where, or prohibiting some trucks from some areas.
Okay, does that answer everything you need?
I think so.
Okay, great, thank you, Sarah, we really appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
So as far as this schedule, Carrie, I had tentatively that we would have this on the next agenda for December third, but the board's also meeting December twelfth, which is a week after, a week and a couple days after. So I don't, I guess asking you, Sarah and Carrie, like, does it make more sense, you know, time-wise, for the third or the twelfth to have information back to the board?
So it might make more sense time-wise the twelfth, but I'm actually traveling for a conference, so I think-
On the twelfth, okay.
Defaulting to the third.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right, well, whatever we can get done for the, okay.
I think that the solar piece is in really good shape and I can distribute a draft for that pretty shortly. I can also make these notes available electronically if that would be helpful, if anyone wants to provide any additional feedback. But if we need to do some mapping to figure out where it would be appropriate to limit the hazardous materials, that probably can-
No, no, and it won't happen in-house either for us. So we can talk, again, we can talk about that offline, but, but I know that's, that's going to be very, that's much more involved.
Okay, and just by chance, did C M R P C record the solar meeting the other night, or no?
No, and you know, a lot of people have been saying that they wish we'd done it the next time. Lessons learned.
It was really good. I learned so much.
All right, so I have a couple extras of these, I'll leave these to you.
Okay, yep, all right.
And I will send you that electronically as well.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sarah, have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay, okay, great. Next, we have on the agenda, interview, design review committee candidate Lisa Misselli. So Lisa, I see that you're here. I did, I heard from Michelle that she is not feeling well tonight, but if we had a, an applicant that we thought was qualified and we'd be a good candidate for design review, then she'd be okay with the board proceeding, if the board would like to proceed? Anthony, would you like to proceed?
Sure.
Process? Okay, okay, so Lisa, welcome, thanks for coming. I'm just going to shift materials here and pull out your application. Okay, so you have applied to the opening, the vacancy in the design review committee. Again, Michelle's not here tonight, but she's the chair of that committee. I think you know Michelle anyway. So what we'll do is we'll just ask you some questions and maybe find out why you're interested and just learn more about you and your experience and sort of just get a little bit of background. And then if you have any questions about the committee or concerns on your own part, then we can talk through that. So I'd actually like to give the board the opportunity to ask questions. Anthony, would you like to start?
Sure. Maybe I just start, like, because usually everybody has a hot button that gets them involved, gets them pushed on to want to serve on any particular board. Is there something in town that got you kind of fired up to want to be involved and to get onto the design review committee?
It's been about twenty years of living in town and being fired up. But the design review actually is, you know, it's close to my heart. I've owned an antique home here, I've owned one in Westboro, Westboro, Church Street, the fanciest street for antique homes in Westboro. I used to have house tours there at the garden club and all that sort of thing, was very involved in many things in the town. And coming to North Grove, you know, I again bought an old home with munchies behind it and a pile of white trash. And so, and I did some research too, and I was reading what the design review has in the bylaws, and it's the purpose, it says the purpose of design review is to preserve historic land, use instructions, and to promote architectural and ecological considerations for the betterment of the community. That's pretty much what I've done, you know, with my buildings. And, and I feel that. I've had a lot of, a lot of experience with, you know, working with the towns in South Grove, Westboro, and even in Roswell. And I have, I think I have some of the natural talents and abilities that you normally have for that. And we went to summer classes in Harvard when I was about fifty, and I just took out a landscape architecture and learned a lot of what Boston does and how, at that time, the Rose Kennedy Parkway was being developed. And they just rearranged all the city to be able to be clean space and what they're going to do with clean space. And so there was a lot of educational training, all of that was put together. To be in the beginnings while things are developing and then the projection and seeing it actually happens. Two years later, these things evolved from above and what we had seen in classes at U T. So, and I think that, you know, with the town right now, with the new master plan coming into play and all of these different developments that's happening, it just seemed to be a relative fit.
I just asked one more question, so is there, I think our design review does a pretty good job and has done a really nice job, certainly in the last many years. Is there, do you think, is there any influence you think you would like to bring to the board that would alter or do something different in terms of the designs that, you know, they're going to put forth?
Well, I don't, I don't know that I would, I would like to add, I'd like to enhance, one of the things that I like to see when you're trying to make a decision on what, what a structure's going to look like is to not just see it from the plan standpoint, which is the area it'll be, but from the elevation standpoint, which is, you know, the face of it, the size of it, but also what it looks like when it comes into the neighborhood. So it's not just the building sitting by itself. Where is it situated on the lane? Where is its three neighbors to each side and to its back? How does it create a homogeneous look for that area? I think those are, those are the things that we do, and I think that's what the design review is. So I would like to be able to take some of that understanding and be able to walk these certain classrooms and stuff.
Excellent, excellent, that's all.
No, you do.
You did get one of my questions, but, you know, as far as improvements in a town, what do you think are some of the biggest things that you would like to, to see that are somewhat part of the master plan, but also design review?
Well, I definitely think a more of a homogeneous look. Talk about being a walking town, if anyone wants it to be a walking town, and that's the contiguous sidewalks. I'd like to be able to have some safety when you're walking, because we, you know, twenty is pretty much a fast truck loop, it's always been a truck loop. And you've got children that walks to, that walk to school, people who want to walk and enjoy, you know, the area as it is, it's not entirely town involved, but they want to live there anyway. So I do think that that would be one of the things I'd like to see more of, I'd like to see more trees. I think that we lost an awful lot of trees in the past ten years and we have to replenish them. And I know Michelle actually is somebody who's really been involved in that. When we first did some of the downtown redo, that there were trees that were planted along the area, so we got some of that. And then when they did the reconstruction, twenty, they were removed and all the pace. So I think we need to start doing that, not only for visual, but also for ecological. I mean, we're not getting the quality of air that we once had. And if you continue to cut down all of the natural resources, that's a good point, it's not good for anybody's health.
Anthony stole one of your questions?
It's all good.
Those are good, those were really good questions. I guess my question is, these meetings, they take place at eight in the morning on a Friday usually, sometimes other days of the week, and I know a quorum has been a problem. Would you be able to make the daytime meetings?
I would absolutely be able to make them, I work myself, so I'm home to do what I want to do when I want to do it. So eight o'clock in the morning is probably the three hour day, I don't know.
It's lunchtime.
And I think my, I had two other questions, but they were along the same lines as Millie and Anthony, so, so I guess that's my other question.
Okay, so, and just reading, you're all set for questions?
Sure, yep.
Okay, did that spark any additional questions from you guys? Okay. So, in looking at your resume, I thought it was really interesting because you had a lot of design components, just Photoshop, Illustrator, photography, a lot of different programs that you've used. Would you say that's something that you've had a lot of experience with, that sort of component, just design in general, or?
Well, thirty-five years ago.
Oh, okay.
I can, I can envision what you want something to look like, draw it, so that you know it. And we both agree that's what you want, and we have it produced, I've done that for years. I brought a few things in that I had done with some clients.
Oh, sure, do you want to show them?
And I can even do, this, this was something that I used for, for my own garage that I had already built. So that was my house at that time, the existing garage, which you probably don't recognize. And then I designed a garage that I wanted to use and simple posed it, so you have a better idea of how it was going to look. And since then, of course, my house has gone to yellow and it's, you know, looks a little different. But you can see the difference just in having a visual. I think it helps you to understand what it's going to look like more than just, you know, an overhead drawing.
Did you design that garage?
I designed a garage and I brought, I didn't bring the whole plans with me for that, but I brought some older ones. I also have done interior design and it's not just, you know, paper designs. Denison Triangle was a place in Framingham that was once Denison's labels and things like that. So this was the architect's work, and these are the photographs and all the, the things I put together for their sales.
Oh, it's a residential now?
That's all residential now.
So it was a factory, is that what it was?
Yeah, it was a factory, yeah, it was a factory, and it's right by the railroad tracks.
Oh, in Framingham?
Yes. And I did a lot of work with Kevin Goodwin and Brendan Holmes, they're owned the property. So some of these were for him to be able to put up on his wall and to say, you know, let people see what, what his, how it's worked. This is what he had, this is what I made. So I did the photography, I did the layouts, I did all of the work that went into it. So that was a before, but that was mine. So that was the before, but that was mine.
That's kind of nice. I want to go there.
So this is, this is in Westboro. I think he's on that. Before and after pictures. So there's a closet door here. I uncovered the wall to find a fireplace. Designed a mantle, created an invisible door. That was a closet that you'd just open up, and that's where it would perfectly be.
She redesigned. That was the original.
Oh, wow.
That's the house. And this is a, a before and after of Arizona.
Oh, that's really neat.
So the one looked like before. I got it, shaking everything out, and that's where I created it. So I made all of that, being of the walls and all of that.
So your expertise seems to span quite a few areas. What would you say your primary expertise is, if you had to?
Well, just the design skill. It doesn't matter your medium. Because I brought this as an example. This is very, this is old. This is nineteen, I think, ninety's. For astropharmacological, it's a crossfire slide guide that I created. And pretty much what I was given was one page of numbers, which were creat and clearance numbers. And this, this was before computers and before you could, you know, look on your watch or anything else to find any dosage. Back, back in the old days when you had to use red coverlets just to see where the printing was going to be. So they gave me, they said, "All right, we have to, we have to dose the drug for men and women." I create something. Here, here's a piece of paper. And so the actual information from master, the drug information, go in the back. And then I created the whole thing. So I had to know how to make it in large form, to be cut and folded after it was printed.
That's now like the thing that CVS staples to the bag?
Yeah, pretty.
Yeah, so it's like, you know, it's funny because if you talk to, like, here you are on a white piece of paper going, "Okay, what are you supposed to do? You have, have men and women and size and weight and everything else." And then if you could do it in your head, then that's probably the only way you're going to manage it. Because today, you just go on the computer and it's like.
You don't even have to think about it.
So, let's see. Oh, yeah, sure. Actually, I didn't see that. Oh, yes, yes, yes. That is funny.
So you have to be very specific.
Old days.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, my God.
Oh, wow, yeah.
A lot there, but it was, it was.
A lot.
So, does the board have any follow-up questions to the materials or anything?
No, these are all really impressive.
So just a couple of, I have some questions as well. So I've seen the application. You do regularly attend town meetings. You haven't had a chance to go to the design review committee meeting, but you have, okay. But you have been to other meetings in town. I've seen you. But also you've sat on in the past Westboro Finance Committee, the Ad Hoc Wastewater Committee. And I thought I saw something about the Historical Board. Was that something Westboro?
I'm sort of, yeah, a board of the Historic Society in Westboro.
Okay.
Which is very, very active in putting makers together and creating, you know, your, giving their acorn and all the information. Jackie Tippman was the, was at that time the head of the Historic Commission. She was, she was incredible. I mean, it was, she runs the town, isn't it?
Yeah, she's in, she, or she passed away? Yeah. Institution.
Yeah, she was an institution. Frank Lied said, "If we're going to tear a building down, she'd chain herself to the building." But, so it was, it was a good, you know, good time for me to come in. I mean, I was doing an awful lot of different things and being on different boards at the same time and had quite a lot of experience with all of that. Yeah, the finance committee, and of course, my education was more in business management. So the numbers and everything work, that's, that's like already in the background on foundation. But the arts were something that I was lucky to just have. The town, my father was an artist and he taught art and shop at his school, so when he was only building a dollhouse.
Oh, wow.
He was actually a sprint. He'd take a boot off and the floor off to play in the basement with. But I did it. It was all planned. But I have that first team experience of all of that, starting at eighteen.
So the design review committee, as Amy mentioned, typically meets on Fridays at eight AM. And you mentioned that's not a problem for you typically. And what they do is they will look at different site plans that come in and will make recommendations to the planning board, because we don't necessarily have that same lens that the board brings. So they, we have two architects on the board, landscape architect, then we have Michelle. There's the resident spot. Who am I missing?
No, that's, that, because we're missing a member.
Oh, got it, okay.
So you had, yeah, you've got four.
That's the right amount. So everybody brings their own lens to it and really looks at these plans. And it helps us a lot because we don't necessarily have that background. So when we get recommendations, they work in an advisory capacity. So we, the planning board could certainly opt to do something differently. But I think typically we look at their recommendations pretty seriously because they do have the expertise. The resident spot in this case, we actually, I'm sure you remember from the last town meeting, just developed, you know, what we wanted the spot to look like. And what we talked about is having the resident spot bring the lens of just at least a design background. So someone who lives in the town, someone who has some sort of design, whether it's interior design or graphic design or maybe that element that we are currently lacking on the board. And you do certainly have quite a bit of that. So I think the team, from what I've seen in attending the meetings, they work really well together. They all complement each other in a nice way and seem to work well together. I don't know if anyone else who's attended would comment. And Kathy, I know you, you, that's a board that you help, that you work with. So I'm probably, sure you'd agree, they seem to all work really nicely and they've worked together a long time. And Michelle chairs that board, obviously, and brings her planning board lens to that. Do you have any questions about how that board works or how, what your role would be or what you, anything about the board in general that we could answer for you?
Well, you know what? The only thing I'd be, I'd like a little bit of insight to is how we're going to interface with the master plan. Or do we interface with the master plan, or is there any, you know, compliment to carry through some of that? Is it just, is it just the commercial ooh bills and setting the large, you know, of buildings?
Like, so that's a really great question. We have outlined in which cases would kick, would spark a design review. I don't, Kathy, do you have any sense from the master plan meetings if there's talk about how design review will play a different role going forward?
Not a different role.
Okay.
It's not, the, the design review committee is not, you know, changing based on, I mean, because again, the master plan's way up here. And the design review is a component of the site plan, primarily focusing on the, the building. The design review committee, though, also looks at, you know, landscaping and the site plan in general, how the building fits on the property. But I mean, the primary focus, you know, has always been and, and I would think, you know, continue to be the, the design component of the building. And they, whether it's commercial or industrial. They, they typically, they, I mean, the design review committee typically try to arrange three meetings with an applicant before they get to the permit granting authority board. And so, you know, we encourage them to come in, you know, very basics at the first meeting, you know, and it's all about elevation and sketches. So, I mean, that's primarily what they're looking at. So I don't, so the, you know, the, the master plan is, is at a much grander scale than, than, you know, what the design review committee is, is looking at.
Is downtown also kicks the review? Is that?
Yes, yep, yep.
So is there anything related to the master plan as we look at a downtown that, that design review?
I mean, if we, I mean, going forward, you know, assuming that the first, you know, project that, that we're going to take out of the master plan is going to be looking at the downtown and that's going to involve a lot of, you know, facets. And, you know, we, the, the group did talk about and, you know, what, what we would see, what we could see in a downtown study, and part of that was visualization. And, and we did that, actually, when we first created the design review committee. We, we hired a consultant and worked on, you know, do you prefer this or this? And we did walking tours, you know, of the downtown and, and, you know, again, it, you know, what, what's your reaction to this building versus this building that, you know, is already in existence? So, I mean, down the line, I, you know, I mean, there may be, you know, design components that might change. But again, it's, it's part of the site plan bylaw. I mean, it's a zoning bylaw.
Right.
And there's two sets of design review guidelines, one for industrial, right? And one for residential.
Right. Right now, there, there's a general which is, which is on, I'm sure you've looked at those. You know, there's the, the design guidelines that, you know, were adopted by the design review committee. And then even though we've, you know, had our issues with, you know, trying to get the guidelines finished for the industrial and the two family, you know, that, that's still an unfinished project with a consultant. The, the group is pretty much agreeing on what those design guidelines are going to be. It's just getting that final product.
Is the industrial done? Because I have a copy of those. Isn't it just the two family that they're working on?
Well, but it's incorporating the industrial into the actual document.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's done. It's just not incorporated into one big document.
Right, right. And that's what, like, you know, any day, I hope, it's accomplished. So, so, so there is the, you know, that, those are the, sort of, that's the handbook that, and the design review committee's advisory.
So, yeah, right, so right now the outstanding component is the multifamily design guidelines that they're still working on. So, any other questions that we can answer, maybe? That's okay if not.
To be able to, to, you know, enhance what's already there. And I know that, I mean, each town is different from that, you know, different Southborough downtown, different Westboro downtown, different Northborough, different Truesbys. But, but the gathering place, I, I'm assuming that we want to create more of a gathering place for the downtown. Where people do want to come and they want to walk about and, and meet each other and enjoy the different locations that we have. And then the Westboro was big, but, you know, back in the eighteen hundreds, it was built that way. I mean, that downtown was built as it is, where the buildings were two, three, four stories high and they were, you know, looking like Concord or anything else like that. But we don't really have that. We only got a few standing buildings from that era. And I think Michelle's real estate is in one of them.
Which is down a story.
Yeah.
You know, from, from the orig, actually, I think even two stories.
Yeah.
I think that was originally a four-story building, yeah.
And so, and then the Old Town Hall is the other one that's, that's the tall building, which I love to see. Go back into that. But, so, yeah, I mean, I just, I think it would help me to spend some of my energy of design.
Okay. Any other questions? No? No? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. So we will, you're welcome to stay. You don't have to stay. We'll just deliberate a little bit and then vote, and you can, you're welcome to stay or whatever the case. All right. Thank you. Thank you for bringing all these materials. That was really, that's really neat. I didn't realize.
I think my portfolio, I must spend a long time to show a portfolio.
Yeah, I didn't realize the before and after with the garage. That's really neat.
Well, and then actually, if you guys have the real after, I think that's on my phone.
With the colors, yeah. Oh, this is yours? I think.
No, just when I prepare.
This is, well, I think we have. Do we have any more materials? Okay. Amy, I'm going to start with you.
Well, I think Lisa sounds great. I was really impressed with everything she brought, her whole portfolio and her designs. And she knows a lot about the town. She's been here twenty years and she talked about living in Westboro and Southboro. They're all similar towns. And she can make the meetings during the week. So I, I think Lisa sounds like a great addition to the design review.
Anthony?
I would agree. I think that we've got, you know, we've got two great architects. We've got a great landscape architect. And I always felt that it should be somebody who's got a, you know, a design background, but more kind of representative of just a typical resident. So I think she brings a very nice balance and mix to the board.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think you have a board that has a lot of people who are big picture oriented and, and want a lot of these right things done. But she also has details and, you know, can, can bring a lot of the smaller pieces to round it out quite a bit.
Okay. I think for me, I like the fact that when we thought about the resident position on this board, that we did, to your point, Anthony, we wanted somebody who had some sort of relevant background. And at the time, we talked about, well, what's that background look like? And we couldn't, we went round and round of, is it design? Is it this? Is it that? And I almost feel like we have quite a few from that list that we originally talked about, whether it's graphic or interior or, even there's something in here about lighting techniques related to photography. So it, it almost hits upon that list that we came up with without intentionally looking for somebody with all of those things. So I like that because I think that it is an important spot on that board and it hasn't been filled. There hasn't been somebody in it for maybe February or so, so.
Almost a year.
Almost a year. So it's been a vacant. So Tony Abreu was in the spot before. So it's been vacant for a while. It's been vacant for a year. So it would be nice to have that. If I were to think, you know, if I were to be the chair, thinking from Michelle's position, I would want somebody who, you know, brings these types of skills, can be a team player, can kind of work with everybody that's currently there and compliment what's there and bring that, bring a new one.
Invested, yeah.
Say that again?
And, and invested in the town.
Yep, yep. So I think that would be positive for her. So I would be in favor of it as well. If, if we feel comfortable voting, Michelle has said that that's fine, if we thought we had a candidate that we thought. If the board would like to vote, we can. If you want to continue, we can. It's up to the board. Would you like to continue, would you like to, someone like to make a motion or would we like to hold? How does the board feel?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lisa Mazzelli to the design review committee.
Is there a second? All in favor? Okay. That's unanimous.
Congratulations.
There might be coming.
Is it really?
Tomorrow, if you can make it.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. We just had to juggle with schedules. Yeah, I mean, if you can, yeah. No, tomorrow, Wednesday, tomorrow morning.
Oh, tomorrow's Wednesday?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah. So the twentieth, right? Yeah, tomorrow.
All right.
Welcome to the group, I guess, right?
We'll see you in the morning. All right. Thank you for applying. This was really a great presentation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, I lost my agenda. Okay, old business, new business, consideration of minutes. So we, do we have the seventeenth and the fifth? We don't, okay.
You have, I took the first out.
Yeah.
And then I just made paper copies for everybody. And then I just made paper copies for everybody.
Okay, were there any amendments to the minutes? No?
No.
Did the ZBA look at these yet?
No.
Okay.
No, I haven't, I, I didn't know how you wanted to do that.
Right, right, yeah.
So, so I sent them to you first. The ZBA is meeting next week.
Okay.
You know, I haven't sent them to them yet, but.
So I don't know how the board feels. My, I would like to give the ZBA an opportunity to look, at least review the joint piece so that we can determine if we can just approve one set of minutes.
Sure.
I, I don't anticipate a wild deviation. Elaine usually gets things pretty down to the point here. Would we be open to letting the ZBA take a look at the minutes and then see if they have anything and then approve, rather than approve and then have to undo it?
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll just put them back on the December third agenda.
Sure, that'd be great. All right. All right, so we'll send these over to the ZBA. I, I don't think it makes sense to approve the other component separately unless the board feels differently. I'm thinking we just do it all in one swoop. And these are from October, so we're still, we're not that far out from the date of the meeting.
Yeah, and you'll have the, those other two sets, the seventeenth, actually Elaine thought that she was gonna be able to get them for tonight, but you'll have that and you'll have, Debbie's gonna do the November fifth, just so we can get caught up. So you'll have those two sets in December also.
Okay, great. Let's see, we also have, do you wanna just cover, should we just cover the decisions right now while we're talking about approving, approving things here?
Sure. So what I, you know, everyone had gotten the final set, I, you know, there was comments from Fred, Carrie, Amy, and Millie. And so those were incorporated, send those back out to you for Zero Hudson Street and Forty-One Lyman.
I don't think I made any.
I, I, you did, I think, Amy, on.
Maybe Zero Hudson?
It might, it might have been. You, you did, you responded on one of them.
Oh, okay.
Or maybe it was Staris, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that was Staris.
But anyways, so.
Because I just read Forty-One today.
So they're, no, on the Staris. So, so those incorporate everybody's changes and, and that's, I think I sent those out Thursday or Friday with everyone's changes. So if you can all just sign, both, those decisions are in there.
Okay, and Michelle can just stop in and sign?
Yeah, she's, when I talked to her today, she's, she's hoping if, if, if she had been able to, you know, kind of lay low tonight, that she's gonna be at the meeting tomorrow morning. But, so we'll see.
One thing with the decision on Forty-One, and it's very minor, but one of the reasons, like, on groundwater that I was okay with it is it mentioned that it was all new equipment. I didn't know if we hadn't mentioned that in the decision, like, because it was lawnmower equipment, we talked about, are you gonna be doing repairs? And we talked about how it won't probably leak because all, it's brand new and they're already in the engine and the oil. I guess why I was thinking about it, and it was just adding the word new in front of the lawnmowers, just because when this changes hands, in the original application before them, the people listed what was in the facility. So this also lists what's in the facility. Being on groundwater one, you'd wanna make sure it was similar, like the other company before was Computer Products, it didn't have hazardous, I don't think. This has oil in it, but it's very specific that they're not doing repairs and it's brand new equipment. And I guess I felt safe approving it on groundwater one because it was new equipment. So, I mean, I wouldn't, I just didn't know if that was something that can be added in the decision, just to note that it mentions so many gallons of oil in the lawnmower equipment and I just didn't know if it mentioned that it was new. Because I wouldn't want somebody to come in and have all old equipment that was leaking and say, well, this is the same as that. But I don't know if that's.
Well, the point of the groundwater approval was to limit the amount of liquids that could be stored there and to make sure that it was below the amount that could be stored in case of a fire or.
Right.
Leak.
Yeah.
And there was well more than what was being stored could be contained. And so that's the, generally, when we write the groundwater portion, it's about limiting the amount of material so that when staff reviews it later, because it's an industrial district, to see if it's more or less detrimental to the groundwater, we compare that volume of material that they're proposing to store there, whether it's new equipment or old equipment or used equipment. That number, that, that's why it's stated in that way. So that's how we compare more or less detrimental.
Just knowing that the original decision, not this one, the one before, one of the conditions was that they needed to supply a, a list of what was in the building. But that condition went away?
The previous use before Crandall Hicks, way back to the original use, was a storage company. It was unknown as to what was gonna be, because they had containers and from residential properties that were moving, people are relocating, and it wasn't known what was inside. So that's why the containment was so, there was so much containment proposed within the original building when it was built.
I guess I'm okay, as long as it doesn't, as long as we don't get any leaking, anything leaking on groundwater one.
Okay. So Fred, do you think that covers it adequately?
I do.
Okay, so if we can all sign that and then Michelle will stop in to sign it hopefully tomorrow, does that, if she does, that meets your deadline?
Yeah, that's, yep, that's okay.
All right, so, let's see.
We have the site plan we can talk about.
Sure.
Here if you want, for Lexus.
Yep, that's fine.
That too is meeting with the design review committee tomorrow. And then they are scheduled to start their public hearing with the, excuse me, with the ZBA a week from tonight. So what I have in front of everybody, because again, it's in flux, this is what happens with, especially with design review. You all have a, an eleven by seventeen set of plans that the design review committee will be looking at tomorrow. The, the main difference between that site plan and the one that, I forgot whether we mailed it to you or it was handed out at the last meeting, but the main difference is, is originally Lexus wa- and Fred will be able to talk about the site plan in a little bit more detail, but I just wanted to point out the difference. Originally, they were proposing two additions and what they've done is they've taken off one of the additions. They, the addition that they're no longer doing is a, a service bay that was at about eleven hundred square feet, so that's not happening. And so it's, it's, it's a very simple, I mean, big impact for the company and their, their, with what they've submitted to the design review, they're, they're doing a lot on the outside of the building as far as the, and I don't have the technical terms, but, you know, basically the facade, but they're, you know, they're swapping out materials on the building and.
They wanna modernize it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I, I, it's sort of updating the whole, so, you know, that's, that's, but the biggest change, just as far as you looking at the site plan, is that they're no longer doing the eleven hundred square foot service bay. So the, and, and the design review committee had asked them for some additional details on the sign, which they have provided to the, to the design review committee. And the, and actually, I believe that that's a, that's a variance that they're gonna, that they're applying for as, as far as the sign. But I think, Fred, not to put you on the spot, but I don't, but I am.
I'm Mitch Cook, I'm a management partner for Hudson Westport.
Oh, hi.
I'm also a president of sixty-seven Cherry Street, and I'm also a prosecutor in the fourth street as well. So we're committed to the community and this is, this is like a nickel. I think you just wanted to build it. So I think you'll see it very advantageous to the community as an investment of two million dollars. And it's interior next to, done mostly with the, it's actually what it is. I would give you a chance to start one street. I have a great deal of respect of the brick and cathy. Took us how many years of the groundwater done that, like, you know?
Six.
So it's a pretty good deal, it still, it still wasn't, but I wanted to just let the community know that the purpose might be, you're expected to be involved in this stuff. Nothing important, just my luck.
And I had just double-checked and, because I know it'll come up with the, the ZBA also, but the, the, the facility is currently licensed with the, through the Board of Slickmen for a hundred and ninety-eight vehicles. And it's, it's been, I think, since two thousand three, two thousand four. The police department, you know, with all of the, the vehicle facilities, you know, does an inspection every year, there's never been any violations at this particular facility. And so I just, I just wanted to add in that. It was just a little extra that I, that I know will come up with the ZBA.
I don't actually have too much to add. I did review the plans, they're pretty straightforward in terms of the site work. And I found out late this afternoon that they've included, they've actually eliminated that bay that Kathy was talking about. So really, the only construction is around that showroom in the front. I'm not quite sure if they've built some modifications to the drainage and the gas line, but I expect it probably still is. The comments that I had were that it was fine. The only real question that I had was that the stormwater operation and maintenance plan that was approved in two thousand and two required some annual reports and I haven't been getting them. And I know I've been working with Mr. Cook for several years on the as-built plans, that they had a number of problems with their drainage system. They had it all worked out in two thousand and eight and it was functioning properly and I'm sure that he either has those records somewhere in his file or he knows for a fact that the system has been maintained. I expect that they'll be able to provide the certification that I'm looking for, that everything's working fine before they get their building. And then going forward, we will be sure to get those annual reports.
Thank you. Okay, do, do we have any comments for consideration for the ZBA to consider in the site plan review? Anthony, do you have anything?
Was there anything about, in here about signage or?
I did think there was a.
There was a note on the application that they were going to do a new wall sign and it would be in conformance with the original.
Was there a new freestanding sign?
There's a freestanding sign on place that was given a variance in two thousand and seventeen, I think.
Oh, that was the old variance.
That was a, a ZBA variance.
Oh, okay, not part of this application.
Not part of this application.
Well, what they're, what they're looking for is to amend that variance. I mean, it's really just, it's, it's more sort of a, a paper trail. But the, like Fred said, the, the variance was already granted and they're actually putting up a smaller sign. By, the, the new sign will be a hundred and three square feet, but I can't tell you what the, what the existing sign is.
Oh, it went the reverse of what I thought then. I thought it was going the other way, okay.
No.
So the sign, so the, the new sign is going to be slightly smaller than the existing sign.
Got it. Okay, Millie, did you have any thoughts for ZBA consideration?
No.
Anthony, did you?
So the sign was my only question, there's no changes to the freestanding signs, it's only the one that's on the building?
No, the, the freestanding's, I'm sorry, Mitch.
Well, I think we put a new freestanding out in two thousand seventeen, but it's far more attractive, we had those signage areas. It's, we had a figure set up, I don't know whether that would have seen it was up till that.
It was actually up higher than the original.
Okay.
Permit was granted, which they didn't find out till they applied for the variance to put up the new freestanding sign.
Okay, and I saw something on, I think Bob's interpretation about earthworks. Does it have to, it's not really disturbing any ground, is it?
Well, the, the initial plan that I looked at did trigger earthwork, so that was one of the comments in my review memo, but if the change, the threshold is a hundred cubic yards, so I'll, I'll put it on there, engineer to do a calculation and let me know whether they're gonna disturb, remove, or bring in more than a hundred cubic yards as part of the project. If they are, then they get.
So is the addition, is that on the pavement that's there? Because I noticed you're losing a parking space, is that what's gonna happen?
Actually, there's probably, what we're doing is like, it's fair enough to go and jog south of the city and kind of find a way of hooking that on right. We're closing both spaces there, so we can do, I think we want to reduce the, the unit and bring in vehicles, but I think it's standing up as well.
Okay, so you're not cutting down any trees?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Those are really my only questions.
Okay, so it sounds like the planning board, it doesn't really have any, it's just as is, there's no letter.
No objections unless design review, if Fred have any.
Well, Kathy or Fred, do you have any, did you have any concerns either?
No, I did my comment letter earlier, yesterday, and then forwarded to Mitch earlier today, so he has all my thoughts, although that was before the plan changed, but I think that they'll all still.
Okay, so I don't think we have any questions.
Do you wanna send just a memo saying that you don't have any objections to the site plan?
Is that okay? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yes, please. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, great, so that takes care of that. Okay, backing up on our agenda then, we have a master plan steering committee update. So that looks like it is primarily, well, Amy, you're the sole representative here. So the schedule is?
The schedule going forward is, well, that would really be the planning board, but I think Kathy already sent in the notice, the public hearing is the downtown. And so that would be the next, it would be the planning board public hearing for the master plan and there's gonna be a presentation. Some of the committee members are gonna present a little bit from each, I guess, five minutes on each section, whether it's land use, economic development. So I think Fran's gonna start with the introduction. Each person's gonna present one of the chapters.
Okay.
And then it'll be up to the planning board, I guess, then we maybe have questions, open it up for public comments.
So what does the board think in terms of, so it's a public hearing, so obviously there was public participation. Should we stop at each section and, and see if anyone has comments or do we wanna run through it all? How long is each section, the presentation scheduled for? Is it like two?
They said five minutes, but most people probably won't even take five minutes, like, Fran just asked everybody to pick a couple.
So maybe keep the flow of it?
I would keep the flow going.
Okay.
Because I mean, they're trying to keep it to under an hour. Like, like you said, Amy, giving everyone five minutes, the consultants are gonna do a little intro, they're gonna have some slides, but, and I know that Fran's gonna, if she hasn't yet, Carrie, I know she's, she wants to touch base with you.
Oh, good, okay.
About the format, but, but then, you know, yeah, I think that probably makes sense. Then do questions after the presentation, yeah.
Okay.
And then you all will, we're, the, I, I probably will have an email by tonight that's got all the changes from the, there were some questions and changes from the last steering committee meeting last week. So I should have the, the, that final, final, final revision. And then, so Rick and, Rick and Fran and myself are gonna go through that and then send that back out to the committee. And then you should all have it, if, if we're, if we stay right on schedule, you should all have it by Monday or, or on Monday. So the, the, the version that, you know, is going to be the, you know, what's presented. And then if anyone wants, and I'll put it in the email, if anyone wants a, you know, it's almost a hundred fifty pages, if anyone wants a printed copy of that, you know, prior to the meeting, you know, I'll, I'll print a copy for you. And then.
I had an idea along the lines of the printed copy because, you know, it's been advertised. Can they leave a copy, like, in the library or at the town hall? Like, say a resident wants to come and look through it before.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a bad.
So they're ready for the public hearing.
That's not a bad idea.
Because I did have some people, yeah, who say, how am I gonna look through it before the meeting? the meeting?
Yeah.
And it'll probably be online too.
Yes, yeah, it'll go after, um, Monday, the plan is, is, it goes online also. It'll go on the town's website and also go on the master plan website.
Maybe could be one of the senior center, if they want to look through it.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we can print, um, um, we can print, you know, copies of that to, to distribute that around.
And you're saying it'll be done by Monday, the what?
The twenty-fifth is when we, like I said, I, I probably have an email sitting, you know, in my box right now, um, that's got the, um, the revisions done from the last steering committee meeting. So we just want to look at it in-house to make sure that everything was incorporated from that meeting and then, um, and then it'll go out, y- you know, to you, um, on Monday.
Okay, great. Okay.
That's the plan.
Okay, so that'll come to us next week, we'll post it online and share in a few key spots, senior center and town hall?
Yeah, maybe even the library.
Oh, yeah.
Just to try to, and we can put a little notice, you know, public hearing, December tenth, just to drum up.
Oh, yeah, there'll be, there's a, um.
Town news.
There, uh, yeah, it'll go out on town news, not, um, but there's a, um, a notice that, that, you know, I drafted, that's, you know, going to get either tomorrow or Thursday, that's going to get sent to all the boards and, you know, and then that's what's gonna go up online and so forth.
Natalie can send it through direct email here if she has a big.
Yeah, we have, we have her send everything, yeah.
Oh, great.
And will it go up on the, the bulletin board that we have out at the town hall?
Did, oh, the, the lot, the electronic sign?
Yeah.
You mean, or, or the bulletin board?
I meant the electronic sign.
Um, yeah, they're, yeah, they're gonna put the, the December tenth date up for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So that is exciting then, so we'll have that, um, copy around the twenty-fifth, the tenth we'll do that hearing. And then we have, for our next meetings, we either have the twelfth or January seventh, so then we'll just have to figure out maybe based on, um, any sort of feedback we get from the hearing, what we want to do in terms of, um, actually adopting it, if we want to do it that week or wait until January. Any thoughts on that? From the board?
I don't know, I think we're waiting till January, we're, we're gonna put twenty-twenty on the cover.
Oh, yeah, we have.
Oh, did you put twenty-twenty on the cover?
We did, we ju, yeah.
All right, well, that settles that.
That was, it just, it just looked like it was just, two thousand nineteen was just kinda hanging there.
Yeah.
So everyone agreed, yeah, to make it twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty sounds like a powerful date.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, great. So any, um, anything else on master plan? Kathy, anything from you on master plan?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, A and Rs or lot releases or bonds?
Uh, nope, none of those.
Great, we did the site plan, um, subcommittee updates, anything from you Anthony?
No.
Millie?
I have one.
Okay, what is that?
So basically CPC and there were a lot of, uh, applications that came through looking for different, funding for different projects and things like that. Um, do you want me to go through the list of the projects or just?
Just the high level, sure.
Yeah, library's looking for some money for, um, redoing some crown molding and plastering on the internet cafe. Um, conservation fund is looking to replenish some of their funding so that they have money, monies available if they need to, uh, for purchasing power and things that may be coming up. Uh, White Cliffs is, um, the amount to be determined, but they're looking to get a new roof on. They had some bids that went out in the summertime that came out astronomically high because it was a busy season, but they also revisited and got some better, some better numbers on that, so, uh, historic commission is looking for some money for the cemetery to put that on the national registry. Um, that's a big undertaking, so i- if they can get that, they can then apply for other funds and get other grants that are avail, might be available. Um, the restoration of the civil war memorial, uh, is cleaning and repairing if necessary, which I guess they find out if they, when they're cleaning it, if they need repairs. So they're looking for money for that. Conservation commission is looking for some money for the pond vegetation management. Originally it went out, I think, for all the ponds and then added an addendum to do Bartlett Pond separately because that was gonna be a bigger undertaking. I understand some of the people that were from these, uh, committees weren't there, so the questions weren't as, as easily answered, um, but, and then the affordable housing committee, Rick was just requesting an extension of funds, there was no, no added funds to that. Um, but, um, so I'm looking forward to going to the next stage, so, oh, yes.
Forgot to ask for the clock.
Oh, that was a big one. That is a big one, yeah. That was on, I, I went right over that, that was right on, uh, yeah, so they came up with some, um, shortfalls on their accessibility for handicap accessibility, so they have to really, um, bring in a project that they weren't expecting to, to update the playground for handicap accessibility, so they have some, uh, emergency quick funds that they're gonna be looking for. Yeah, I mean, some big ones.
Oh, wow.
It was eventually on the line, but it would've been, maybe, they would've liked two to three years to develop this and come up with a plan, but the, um, the ADA for the state is looking for something to be granted within six months, so.
Oh, wow.
They had to jump ahead on that.
So there's no choice really?
Not much, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Amy, anything from groundwater?
No, but I think we're gonna meet, do you think it'll be the fourth?
I do.
December fourth.
Okay. Um, Michelle's not here, designer view has a meeting tomorrow morning and they'll be looking at the Lexus, the, what is the address? I don't have it there.
Fourteen.
Fourteen Belmont, um, tomorrow. Um, CMRPC, last week was the, um, quarterly meeting, we had the solar presentation, which we just heard a lot about here today and Amy was able to attend that and Julianne Hirsch, the board selectman representative, um, on CMRPC was able to attend as well. Um, it was really great, as you saw from Sarah, she had a wealth of expertise and knowledge that she shared and a, a panel was available to just provide different perspectives, so I thought it was really well done and well worth the time. Um, okay, that's all of our subcommittees.
Carrie, can I just ask on something else?
Oh, sure.
Um, I was originally, um, going to go, and again, you know, our attendance isn't like mandatory at any of these, but, um, they have a, um, legislative breakfast this Friday and, um, I was originally going to go, but I now need to go to a funeral, um, so I just didn't know if anyone else, uh, so I could just tell Central Mass, I didn't know if anyone else was going to go or not. It's not, like I said, it's not a, it, it's not a subject that, um, I think they're, uh, they're basically talking about data. Um, there's the Worcester Bureau, um, I don't have, I don't have their full name, um, but anyways, it's, so I just, I just wanted to throw that out there. It's, and I know it's hard, it's, you know, during the workday and, um, but it's at West Boils, it's at West Boils and Senior Center, if anyone's interested.
What time is it, is it in the morning?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty? And what do they typically last, about an hour or something?
They, uh, they're, um, it's about an hour and a half is how, how they generally have them scheduled, it's a ten, eight thirty to ten.
Okay, I'll take a look at the email and I think everybody has, Kathy forwarded that to everybody too, so.
Yep.
So, again, it's not a, you know, it's not a, a subject that, like, is, you know, super pertinent right now for us, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
That, that I, I ju, I just can't, I can't cope.
When you say it's data, what is?
They're, um, they're, uh, they're looking at, there's two, there's two agencies that are going to be there, I, I'll have to look at the agenda again, um, but how they collect data, how it's used, um, you know.
Okay.
I didn't bring the agenda with me, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, I was just curious, it is kind of a big thing.
The big.
Yeah.
Okay, great, um, and you have the, your decision, is that the decision folder over there, so you have that?
Yes, yeah, so we're all set with that.
All right, so that's good.
Yeah.
Um, so we have preparation for town meeting, it's the last time we talked about any potentials that we wanted to consider, that were not too, too labor intensive, since we're looking at, um, solar and hazardous right now. Did anyone have anything that they want to bring up?
I have a handout in there, small changes, some of them, I tried to break them down. They're not separated, so it was all in a big stack, cause I didn't have time to stick with them before.
Thank you. Oh, I was wondering, yeah, okay.
So I could go through them and it shouldn't take me that long and, and everybody could take it home and look them over. And the first one I just have on top was, um, about kennels, cause kennels was a big discussion this year. So the first four pages are about kennels. So we allow them right now on RA, which are the, um, eighty thousand square foot lots, the bigger lots, and we allow them business west. And, um, I was just wanting to have a quick discussion, what the planning board thought about kennels in residential neighborhood because of, you know, the application that was before the ZBA and the neighborhood that had to, um, had a problem with the kennels in their neighborhood, even though it was a dog walking, it was a large amount of dogs. And we do have a couple kennels in town, there's one on Hudson Street that I know of, there are two downtown and there might even be more. So I was just, just wanted to bring it up with the board, what they thought about taking kennels out of a residential neighborhood and just leaving them in business west where they are right now, or even adding an industrial, I don't know if it even makes sense, but because they have big lots where you could have a big fenced in area and dogs could run around and. So that was the first one and people can bring it home and think about it. The second page was updating the kennel definition, so the first page, like the second page, these are the definitions that are by the state and these definitions, they're quite long. So if you go to page three, what I did was I looked at Southborough, Westborough and Northborough and, um, I tried to make it smaller. So on the middle of page three where it says article X, 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 new bylaw, it goes through where kennel is in our, um, are in our bylaws, it's under business trade in the kennel and that's a definition and people could bring it home and read it and decide what they want, but I tried to incorporate some of the state definition with some of like Northborough, Westborough, Southborough, cause some towns now are just using the state definitions, but it goes into like breeding and hunting and, I didn't know if it was too much. So, and it's a lot to look at right now, so I thought that's something that you can bring home, but, so page two is just what the state has and I have a link to the state bylaws for dogs. And then page three is what our zoning law has currently and a definition I had proposed where, um, I used what we had and just added a little more. So then page four, just ran on to page four. So the next couple sections were just little changes. Where, um, commercial recreation has to do with gyms and there have been people coming to the, um, ZBA asking for gyms in the old warehouses, like that's a big thing nowadays, where people set up CrossFit and different type of facilities and warehouses, so I thought, well, why not allow them in industrial where if we have some warehouses that need to be reused, we could allow commercial recreation indoor. That would also open it up to something like say Skyzone or Teamworks or Forteck, if another big facility wanted to come in and use an old warehouse for any sporting, indoor sporting. It's already allowed for outdoor, but not indoor, so I just thought that was a small change. The next section I went down, I just kinda went through our bylaws. And, um, so the next group talks about commercial greenhouses and wholesale trade. I didn't know if these were old, that should be updated, like in business east, a commercial greenhouse was by right, I didn't thi, I thought those might have to be by special permit because, um, Carrie and I did go to, um, a class about writing bylaws and he said there's a lot with the marijuana now, where people are trying to squeak things in under greenhouses, under agriculture, he said he wouldn't believe how creative people are getting, even though the state tried to cover everything with, with their bylaw, people are still trying to squeeze things in. So when I saw our town had a commercial greenhouse, I'm not trying to squeeze out the greenhouses, but I think in business east it used to be Fisk Greenhouse, which isn't there anymore, but maybe we allow them by special permit so we can at least see what they're bringing in, so it's not just by right and then all of a sudden we're surprised. So it's still allowing them there, but they would have to come through a special permit process and, and tell us what they were gonna do. The wholesale trade, um, it's, talks about warehouses and outdoor storage. I, I looked at business west when we go through the master plan and the business west is a commercial that people are trying to get to be more restaurants, more shops, we're trying to get our commercial uses away from warehousing and trucking. So I thought wholesale trade, although, might've been a great use there at one point, that in today's day and age, we might not want any more warehouses built over in business west. So I just updated those. And we can bring those home if you want. The same thing on the next page was a commercial storage facility in business west, a commercial storage facility is a cold or, um, it's a warehouse and it can be cold storage, dry storage, but we have so many warehouses that have space. I thought if we have a business west zone that's commercial, that we should prohibit warehouses being built there, just because we have so many and in the master plan we talked about reuse and using what's already built. I'm just trying to look at the vision of business east, business west and downtown and I was trying to, you know, nobody's come before the board for a commercial storage facility and maybe they won't, but I just looked through and where warehouses are being allowed in our downtown. And then I get to the last page, which is industrial uses, well, not the last page, but the last page of our table. And I also felt that light manufacturing, research and development, warehouses, trucking, contractors yard and accessory uses should not be prohibited, but they should come before a special permit, cause that's what we have the special permitting process for, is to go through and say, is this what we, what we envision in our town? Is this, a lot of the CMRPC meetings we went to, like, they said, um, you know, you should go through your bylaws every year. She was all about updating with the solar, that Lester woman says she updates her solar bylaw every year because of things she runs into and I think it was Janet who came up to us and she's like, you should go through your bylaws every year and update what fits in your town, what doesn't fit in your town and, so that's what I was trying to do with those. Everybody can bring them home. And attach the next couple pages for just the definitions for what the industrial uses are, so when you, um, look at the chart, you can read them if you want. Under fuel storage, I cross out underground, underground tanks and, um, that might be a small change that we don't even do this year, but when I look at, do we really want something that we're having underground tanks? I don't know. Seems like it's something hazardous that we're trying to get away from and it's just a little thing that is still included in our bylaw, even with Tridabe, Tridabe and ZECO, they brought those tanks above ground so they could not be monitored and they weren't leaking into the soils.
Where does it say underground tanks? I'm sorry.
Um, I should've numbered my pages, it's in the definitions, I highlighted it and it crossed out.
Okay, got it, got it, oh, thanks.
And it might be too small of a change to do right now, maybe that's part of, it's just something that stuck out to me because I did go through all that, the ZECO and the Tridabe discussions and they were bringing the tag, tanks above ground to make it safer. So, um, the next one, which was more of a major one for me, talks about home occupation. I don't know if everybody's on that page. So home occupation was, um, an application that was in front of the board this year, not our board, a different board. And there were a lot of questions with interpretation and we did go to a class about writing bylaws and the, the teacher, the lawyer that taught the class said, home occupation is an area where you really need to be tight, tightened, you have to be more restrictive to get what you want in your town or not what you want in your town. So with the interpretation, I wanted to change home occupation as an accessory use wholly within. wholly within an owner occupied detached, single-family dwelling, because I feel that's the way it was meant to be, and that's the way it's discussed when you, when you look up all these other towns, I've researched a lot of different towns, but, um, there was some interpretation with ours, so to fix that interpretation for what we would perceive, I, I think we should add wholly within an owner occupied detached. And, um, along with that, I just made other changes with the conditions, and I used different towns, but a lot of people had more than one non-resident shall be employed on the premises, I didn't find any other towns that included except by special permit. So the areas under our conditions, which is on the second page there, under B, it says the following conditions shall apply to any home occupation. Number one is what we already have in our bylaw, not more than one non-resident shall be employed on the premises, and then I crossed out except by special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. Number two, I added what a lot of towns had, not more than twenty-five percent of the existing gross floor area, or four hundred square feet, whichever is smaller, which kind of goes by what we were saying about solar, but a lot of home occupations have that same thing, and I took out the expect, except by special permit. And number three, the sign pointed back to our signed bylaw, but our signed law, bylaw allowed for a lit sign in the home, in a residential, so, when I looked at other towns, they said except for one unlit sign of not more than three square feet, some said two, some said three, but I think if there's a home occupation in a residential neighborhood, people aren't gonna wanna a sign lit up. Then, number four was what we had, number five talks about sale of goods, and under sale of goods, some towns add the hours of operation, Monday through Friday, these are all just suggestions that I hope people can bring home, and then we can talk about it at our next meeting. And then number six was our own, number seven, no use or storage of hazardous materials, that was in Chelmsford, and then there were a lot of towns that talked about commercial vehicles and the weight limit on commercial vehicles, so people aren't, um, parking like dump trucks. So those are just ideas for conditions on home occupations, but the class we went to, he said it was very, you know, a lot of people, he said the biggest thing, he's like, you might want to consider, is there, tons of towns have tattoo parlors in the, in residential neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
So, he said you can either have a list of what you permit, or you can have a list of what you prohibit, or you can strengthen up different wording, which is what I did, I didn't really, I also found when I looked at all the other surrounding towns, that we're the only people who, um, we're the only town that mentioned a home personal service, most towns only include a home professional office, which is medicine, dentistry, law, architecture, it's like people with a license for the engineering. So, I know it's a lot to read, and hopefully it's not too confusing, I think when you sit down and read it, after all the conditions, I put an example of what Framingham has for their home occupation, and it's very simple, it's just one paragraph, they don't even have any, they kind of include their conditions in with it, and, um, that's all they had, was that one sentence, I mean, one paragraph. What I found is Framingham must have redone their, um, zoning bylaw in two thousand and eighteen, their zoning bylaw is really, really good, and what they did, which I suggest maybe we do in the future, if we do a whole zoning bylaw rewrite, is, it was also mentioned in this class, for every section, they have a purpose and intent, so like, I took a copy of one of their pages, they have a historic reuse section, and it will say the purpose, and the purpose of this historic reuse bylaw is to preserve and enhance historically significant buildings, so, and it goes on, but every section has a purpose for what the section is supposed to accomplish, like, we say, the purpose and intent of this industrial, and it is really good, and the class we went to said that's the way people are doing their bylaws now, they add a purpose and intent, so it helps cut out some of the interpretation, so when the building inspector, if we have numerous building inspectors over the years, since I've been on the planning board, we've had like four, and, um, but if he can go in and read the purpose and intent of the section, he might have an idea of the purpose and intent of our bylaws. So I wanted to talk about home occupation, that was a big one, and then, the second last thing I threw in there came from Framingham, and this was, um, what they had under prohibited uses, and I thought if we couldn't do a hazardous waste bylaw, we could do what Framingham did, was a whole list of prohibited uses, and they said no use variance should be granted, nothing in this zoning bylaw shall prohibit or regulate any use for Master General Law forty A three, which is the ones that are exempt, but they just listed out all these, like, a glue plant, petroleum refinering, asphalt plants, because those are the things that sometimes have come before our town, and I think they've probably come before Framingham, so they made a whole list, and I thought it was a really good list, I mean, we could cross some things off, but I thought it was an idea too, along with the hazardous waste bylaw, or instead of the hazardous waste bylaw, because they wrote they prohibited the manufacturer use, storage, transport, or treatment or disposal of processing of explosive, toxins, or hazardous materials, asphalt plants, truck terminals, I don't know, it was just an idea, I just wanted to include it, if anyone has a chance, they should go through Framingham, because they have a really good bylaws. Not that ours aren't good, it's just something, they must've just redone theirs. And the very last one, it just ended up on the last page, had to do with, um, funeral homes, um, funeral homes right now are allowed in RC by special permit, and, um, we really only have one funeral home in town now, and it's on Main Street Residential, so I was just changing the bylaws to take it out of RC and general residential, and allow it on Main Street Residential. There really isn't a high demand for funeral homes, but I know that most neighbors probably wouldn't be happy if someone came in and proposed a funeral home next door, not only the traffic, but everything else. So, that's my list, and it seems long when you first look at it, but it's really not very many major changes.
Thank you for pulling this together, so, why don't we all take this home?
Right, yep.
And then, so we can look through it more carefully, and maybe look at how our, how it compares to our current, and just think through it a little bit.
Right, definitely.
Would that be okay with you guys, to just take this home?
We do.
Yep.
So that we don't, and then we're getting away.
I know it's a lot, sorry.
And then, um, next, maybe next time, kind of talk more specifically, if there's anything, if we prioritize or think about, or maybe put on the radar for whatever we want to do in the coming years.
Sure.
Okay, does that sound good to you guys?
Yes.
Okay. Um, alright, I'll write that down. This was a lot of research and probably a lot of work, thank you.
I know, and it probably comes up confusing, it makes sense to me, 'cause I've been looking at it for weeks, but it's hard to try to get it out fast, is it really quarter to ten?
Yes.
Wow.
The only other thing I have, Carrie, that's in front of you, that I just want you to know, um, and not put in the recycling pile, is, um, there was an application today, and it'll be on your December twelfth agenda, four, five, Goddard Road, um, there's a, um, uh, the, uh, contractor's yard, I guess is what it would be called, um, that's, um, has property on five Goddard Road, so that's what you have, you know, in front of you, and that'll be before, before you, I mean, like I said, it was just filed today, that'll be before you on December twelfth.
Do you know what type of business it is?
The, um, it, it's, he's in Berlin now, I don't know the name of the business, um, yeah, but I, I-
So he does small site work and road work.
Okay, so I don't, I don't know what his company's name is, but, um-
Where's Goddard Road? I'm just thinking.
Straight off to Barefoot.
Barefoot. Right across there. It's where St. Cobain is.
Oh, okay.
If you're heading out towards two ninety.
Yeah, it's on the same side as St. Cobain?
Yes, Godd- Goddard Road, I mean, you're on Solon Pond Road, so a right would be Goddard, a left would be Barefoot, so it's on the corner of, of Goddard and Solon Pond.
So wait, I'm sorry, you said they're coming on the twelfth?
Yes.
Um, and before then, are they meeting with all their, the committees, like, Design Review or Groundwater or whatever?
Yeah, they just were fi- they just filed today, so, um, they backed into that, you know, meeting date.
Okay.
Um, so they'll be, groundwater, I think, is the fourth, December fourth, and then tomorrow, you know, I'll find out from the Design Review Committee when they want to meet.
Okay, so if they do meet with everybody, if we could get any materials, like, sooner than the day of, like, maybe forty-eight hours before, so that, it's just hard to read everything when we get it last minute, so if they go to Design Review or Groundwater, if we just get it, so we can review a full scope of everything, that'd be great, I know sometimes it's hard, but.
The only thing before we close up here is, I'd like to, and we can, again, think about this as with Amy's stuff, but I'd like to look at the waiver for the two families this year again, about eliminating it from the zoning laws.
Okay, so why don't we, Emeli, do you have anything else you want to consider?
For-
If we were to take stuff home and think about it for next time, is there anything you want to think about?
Oh, no, to add on to that, no.
I think you mentioned funeral homes before.
I did, that was a while ago, though.
Okay.
Amy's got it covered now.
Alright, so why don't we think about, I'll take that home, come back, talk again on the third, we have this application on the twelfth, um, then our January meetings, the seventh and twenty-first.
Yeah, and December third, you've got, um, Starris coming back.
Oh, is that confirmed, they are able to?
Well, I, no, I, I haven't received any material from them, they have your memo, but we had, at your last meeting, you continued it to December third.
That's right, okay, and they're gonna let us know if they want to extend that. So that reminds me, thank you for bringing that up, we have a letter from them, I think everybody has a copy, where they invited us to their New Jersey facility, they invited the staff and planning board to go down, so that's something, um, I suppose we don't have to decide on it now, but if everybody just reviews that letter, and, that's something, is that something staff would be interested in, visiting that, or is that not something typical?
Um, no, I mean, the fact that it's out of state, that's unusual, but, I mean, that's just physically where it's located, um, yeah, I mean-
Well, they invited staff as well, is that some, would you, would it be helpful to staff?
Depends on how, when the schedule falls and we're available, probably.
New Jersey, go to New York, on a bus.
Okay. Um, did anyone else have thoughts about that, possibilities of visiting, or, tough to say, I guess it's tough to say without knowing the schedule, I know everybody's working and stuff going on, so.
I mean, I would be interested in going, but again, it does depend on when and what their scheduling turns out to be.
Okay.
Is it an X-ray, like, facility like they're proposing here, because I thought there weren't any built yet.
It's not.
It's different?
It is, yeah, it's not a X-ray producing facility, but it is a, I think it's one of their gamma rays, with different, different levels of radiation, and this is, this is not the same thing.
We have gamma here in North Park, that's just what I'm wondering.
We do.
Yeah, like, are we going to see something different that isn't already on, like, Whitney Street?
Mm-hmm.
My guess, since it's like three and a half hours away, my guess is that it's significantly different.
Right.
But I mean, you can ask them, you know, at your next meeting.
Okay. Would it even be relevant or appropriate to visit Whitney Street, or is that not even the same?
I think it's real, it's different.
It's just totally different, okay. Okay, so maybe we just let, Mike, was that who invited us? He came to one of the hearings?
Yeah, he's the, the plant manager-
Okay.
At, um, on Whitney Street.
Okay, so, um, I don't know if he's waiting for a date from us, or possibly-
No, no, I let him know, Carrie, after your email, know that, that the board's gonna take it, you know, under advisement, and they'll probably talk, they, meaning you, will probably, you know, talk more with them about it on December third.
Okay, alright, great.
I mean, no commitment.
Alright, perfect. Okay, um, and then, as we know, next ZBA meeting is the twenty-sixth, you will be able to ask them about the minutes of that, so that we can square up?
Yes, yep, I'll, I'll send them the minutes, the joint minutes, and then I'll also send them, the only thing on the agenda is Lexus, and, um, so I'll just send them, um, you know, a two-sentence memo from the board saying that you don't have any objections to the site plan, as it's proposed.
Okay, alright, great, so, that's it, unless with Thanksgiving coming up, we all want to say what we're thankful for this year?
[laughing]
We're thankful, we're thankful that we're during the meeting, how about that?
Thankful that we're down before ten.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion during the adjournment?
I'll make a motion during adjournment.
Okay.
I second that, thankfully.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody, happy Thanksgiving.